You think we can get started? Do you want to count down? Good evening. This is the Northampton Policing Review Commission Public Hearing for December 1st, 2020. And this meeting is being recorded by Northampton Open Media. We are going to go ahead and get started. Noah, do you mind doing a roll call?
Yes. Lois Erins.
We have to add the ability on you. There we go.
Dan Kennedy.
Oh, here.
Michael Quinlan. Not here. Josie Rosales. Booker Bush.
Here. And Michael Quinlan is here.
He just has his mute on.
I'm here. Michael Quinlan, I'm here.
Alex Jarrett. Dana Olivo. Carol Owen. Nick Fletcher. David Hous. Elizabeth Barajas Roman. Not here. Namdi Pol. Cynthia Supas. And Javier Luengo Garido.
Thank you, Noah. We are going to start this evening with subcommittee presentations. Alternatives to Policing will go first, and each presentation will be between five to 10 minutes to review what we have come up with or gone over thus far since we have begun meeting.
I'm the chair of the Alternatives. This is Booker Bush. I'm the chair of the Alternatives to Policing Commission. We've been looking at a number of issues. We have spent the most time focusing on looking at alternatives to the response to calls that have mental health as their major issue. We have been looking at programs from across the country that include everything from police only responding to phone calls to partnered responses to phone calls where mental health providers along with police officers respond. There are also programs where only mental health providers respond. Those are more sparse and fewer in between. There's also, as you dig deep and thanks to many of the comments we've gotten from the public, there are also programs that are similar to restorative justice programs where it's actually peer or community-led program, people who are doing the care. So it's not just whether police are involved, but whether professionals, psychologists, physicians, where instead they would be being dealt with by people from the community who have a similar history of issues. So we're looking at a variety of problems. Tomorrow, actually, we are meeting again, and we will be having presentations about the impact of homelessness and other issues in terms of what's going on with policing and what should policing have as a responsibility. I'm going to stop there, and if other members of the Alternatives to Policing Committee want to add other insights, please do at this point.
This is Alex Jarrett. I would add that other research that we are doing that we haven't delved into as much during the commission meeting is on domestic violence, substance abuse, and so those are also issues that we'll be going into more depth on in terms of alternatives.
Thank you. The next subcommittee is Budgets and Contracts.
I'm going to read our statement. So this is from the Contracts and Spending Committee. And that committee is Dan Kennedy, Michael Quinlan, Josie Rosales, and me. And Lois Erins. One of the ways in which a city expresses its values is through its budget. Where funding goes and how it is used is a statement about what the city thinks and believes to be central and important. The Contracts and Spending Subcommittee of the Northampton Policing Review Commission is tasked with looking into and developing an understanding the financial obligations and expenditures of the Northampton Police Department. This includes how NPD contract acts as a revenue source for the city as well as its costs in regard to staffing and equipment. The ultimate functions of this subcommittee is to support any recommendations for transferring responsibilities and funding from the NPD to other departments and knowing and finding avenues of community investment to improve Northampton's safety. To achieve this goal, we are still reviewing years of financial information, contracts, and grants related to the NPD. Our current avenues of inquiry involve several areas, and as we learn more, we are developing better understanding as well as new areas to inquire about. Our interests are currently, one, the reallocation and recommendation for the recent 10% funding. The recent cuts to the Police Department have not been allocated. We would like to be able to make recommendations to the mayor about where and how these funds could be allocated within the city to improve community safety and invest in community resources that serve the most vulnerable, including but not limited to warming shelters, community centers, and meeting public sanitation needs in the downtown area. Salaries, detailed pay, and expenditures. Police officers represent the majority of the highest-paid employees, city employees, including many making more than the mayor. The city has routinely paid about $250,000 more in overtime pay per year. And officers have received thousands of dollars, sometimes upwards of tens of thousands of dollars in pay per year from police detail work. This represents, in the most extreme, an individual working 5,277 hours a year or over 100 hours per week. Put another way, the average salary is $59,000 and range from $49,317 to $151,278. The range of overtime is from about $50 to almost $13,000 a year. Police details from a low of about $50 to as much as almost $75,000. There are also discrepancy in payroll information for some of these years for officers. We are seeking to understand where the gaps in information are as well as how this maps to outcomes and in relation to any concerns about officers overworking, which represent a potential danger to the community. While we believe it's a person's right to earn a decent living, we see trends which seem to show a significant difference between salary and actual pay. There is also the cost for equipment, which is important to understand. Vehicle costs, replacing vehicles, as well as maintenance and gasoline expenditures result in hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Three. NPD revenue streams. Related to the above are the funds collected by the city for detail work, civil asset forfeiture, ticketing, and more. These funds are not required to be allocated to any particular department or to help support community investment. We would like to better understand how funds are moved within the city and what processes we can recommend towards investing the money collected via these means and distribute it to departments and initiatives that serve the community interest, which can reduce the overall arrest rate within the city. Four. Police action costs. In order to make responsible recommendations as responsibilities are transferred away from the NPD, we need to understand the associated cost breakdown. While the police logs do help in a small way, we will be working cooperatively and collaboratively with the Policy and Services Committee to understand what the police do so we can better understand the relationship between policing practices and costs. Funding opportunities for new departments. As many municipalities explore ways to improve community safety, many have looked to creating new departments and commitments to improving community safety through equitable and safe access to community resources. Should the commission recommend this, our subcommittee will provide recommendations for funding processes and opportunities to the mayor and the city council. Our work, understanding the budget, largely only makes sense when it is taken into account holistically as part of understanding the current policies and practices and the values and visions our community has for its ongoing safety and inclusion. Our work will continue to remain collaborative with other subcommittees whose work gives context and meaning to the numbers. We also welcome any feedback from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. The next subcommittee is Policies and Procedures.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Lois. Thank you, Booker. And thank you sincerely to 130 people who are participating in our public hearing tonight. This is greatly appreciated, and we are This is greatly appreciated, and we are interested in hearing what you have to say. My name's Nick Fleischer. I am chair of the Policies and Services Subcommittee. And I'm going to read a summary of what our committee has been up to so that I can cover all the points that I planned on. The members of our Subcommittee, the Policies and Services Subcommittee, include myself, David Hous, Elizabeth Barahas Roman, Namdi Paul, and Cynthia Suopis. In the search for new structures and ideas for funding the safety of all members of our community, the full commission established a one Subcommittee to look at the existing structure of the Northampton Police Department, and that's the Policies and Services Committee. Our Police Department is going to have an important role in any model of community safety that is recommended by our commission. Our Subcommittee seeks to understand both the strengths and weaknesses of the current policing system and to seek ways to strengthen existing structures in meaningful ways. As instructed by the City Council, we are also seeking areas to reduce the footprint of department activities where they can be better provided by other entities in our community. Our Subcommittee is not trying to investigate all of the services and policies of the Northampton Police. That would not be particularly helpful or achievable. So our early work has been to narrow our focus to what we feel might be important in an expanded model of policing. I would also like to note that our review of current police policies, that unlike many institutions, in our, in what we looked into, the Northampton Police have a thorough and easily accessed range of policies to guide their work. For some, this may seem like a minor or maybe even an irrelevant issue since policies do not always reflect the realities of practice. But it's important to note that our Police Department has provided thorough written guidance to shape and structure their policing activities. Our committee has chosen to focus on several specific policy areas that we think are important for shaping the future direction of the policing aspect of public safety. We are currently looking at the following. First of all, the complaint process at the Northampton Police Department. We're looking into that. We've requested information. We're looking at complaints, how they are processed, how they are received, reviewed, and resolved with particular attention to the Internal Affairs Review Process. This is, a great deal of information is available on the Northampton Police website, but this is an area that we felt was not that clear, and we would like to understand it better. Second is whether and how the police develop their strategic planning, and how does it, and does their strategic planning include any goals around community safety, implicit bias, social values, things that would enhance the police interaction with the community and promoting different concepts of safety. The third area is having a better understanding of their approach to education and training. The fourth area, and this is, seems to be a common focus across the commission, the fourth area is to understand better their approach to responding to mental health problems and to consider ways they can better use our community programs to deliver services and which will be more effective at serving people with mental health and behavioral challenges. We know that much work has been done in this area by the police, and we believe that much more can be done. And Booker referenced that in terms of looking at a range of models for addressing mental health and behavioral health issues. Finally, we wanted, we have asked for a full breakdown of their time and activities. Some of it is available on the website, but it's not really clear how it's all broken down. And we would like to know how they allocate their resources and their energies and where they are spending, how they allocate their time, basically. And we've submitted requests for information about that. We've requested information that will inform our discussions around these five areas of inquiry. We expect to then work with the entire commission to come up with unified recommendations regarding the existing policing model. If any of the Subcommittee members would like to add to that, please, please speak up. Good.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much.
We are going to move into public comment. And I just want to frame what that will look like really quickly. There will be five minutes for public comment and five minutes for question and answer with a total of 10 minutes. And if you have questions, if you do have questions that you'd like the commission to respond to, please make sure that you indicate that at the beginning of your comment. Otherwise, we will accept it as a public comment and move on to the next person. In order to raise your hand, please make sure that you use the raise hand function in Zoom. If you're not able to do that, we'll figure it out. We'll find another way. Dan or Noah, are people able to chat us if we need? If they're unable to?
We turned the chat off, but I can turn it back on.
No, I'm just trying to figure out another way to raise hand if folks aren't able to raise hand.
Chat is now set so that it can go to the host.
Oh, great.
You can chat with, if you can't make a comment.
Yes, so once you raise your hand, myself or Dan will call on you and then unmute you so that you can go. And we shall begin. We already have lots of hands up. And our first, the first person that I have is Booker Bush.
I'm actually speaking to Noah. We actually have Spanish interpreters who are available as part of this meeting. I'm getting a message from them that at present they're on mute. So I'm hoping they can get involved with Noah. So if there's anyone who's primarily Spanish-speaking or understanding, they have access to that service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Booker.
Hi, I'm one of the interpreters, and Nicholas Magnolia. Nick is the other interpreter. We could not unmute nor reach out to Noah before, so thank you, Booker.
Just in case, shouldn't what Jess Booker said be translated for anybody who is in the audience and how the procedure of the public comment will go?
The host needs to enable or turn on interpretation. It needs to be started so that we can be put into our interpreter booth.
It says, sorry, one second, y'all. It says that you haven't joined. And I'm wondering if you have insights.
Usually it can be started as long as the interpreter is on the participants list. Doesn't necessarily matter if it's the email address that was pre-assigned.
You are both assigned. Yes, great, awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you. The first person that I have is Steve Jones.
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to thank everybody that's involved in this commission. It's really important work, and I really appreciate what you're doing. And I wanted to bring up two things. One, chokeholds, and whether that's been, as a policy issue, has been addressed. And the second is to endorse the idea of an alternative for mental health. I think Eugene Oregon has had this extraordinary experience with non-police response to many of the calls, 911 calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Adesah.
Hi, can you hear me? Well, I'm here again to advocate for our local healthless population and the population that's most at risk to be subjected to state violence. I've been coming here and there since the committee started. I'm a local organizer with decarceration and abolition groups. And I think it's clear that this state has been conducting a long campaign of violence against homeless, indigenous, and black people in terms of jailing them, banning them from panhandling, banning them from being in public spaces or on public land. And as an indigenous person, a black person, as a colonized person, I'm here to advocate for the people that originally lived here, the people that lived here before white men came and decided to make rules here and build prisons here and put our people in prisons here. I'm here to advocate for the people that are homeless and subjected to white men's cruelty, as we're all familiar with that. We're here today because white men are cruel. White men have built prisons here. Mayor Narcoitz is one of those cruel white men because he has not yet cooperated with any of our local organizers. So I'm here battling against white men, their jails, and their cops. I'm here to beg people to recommend to change ordinances so we can build small, humble homes for people that are on the street because of white men. And I'm here to beg people to recommend that public land not be sold to private companies owned by white men. Again, so I'm here for you. I'm here for, like, when people are put out on the streets. And I'm here to advocate for, like, the common person like that might run out of money and might be homeless one day. I'm here to remind people that white men have been charging people money to live in houses and money to live on my land, on my family's home, like, for hundreds of years. And that it's not necessary that we have a lot of options and community resources to provide for each other without the police and white men putting people in prisons in order for them to be able to use them as labor. So I would encourage you to make recommendations for your community to be able to stop this, like, rampage of abuse that has been brought upon us by white men. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Tay.
Hi, I'm Tay. I usually say them phonouns, and I live in, I don't know if you did that for this one. But, and I organize with unhoused people in Northampton. And I want to just start this whole thing by saying Northampton creates massive human rights violations and neglects human rights and needs every single day and has. And I think we kind of do need to frame that to keep avoiding this lie of like, this, like, this white liberal fantasy type thing and that we don't have an issue here because that's, it's just not true. And I just, to back that right now again for everybody to hear, we do not have access to public drinking water in Northampton right now, right? So we're not, okay. But anyways, and I know people have asked again and again directly from unhoused people and unhoused organizers. And we have had people come to these meetings before and speak. And one, they were really uncomfortable and they weren't able to share what they actually wanted to share because of fear of social services and police. So I want to just kind of remind people why people aren't coming to this. And then people are, if you're already, where is this? If you're already, if people downtown are already being harassed and arrested by the police every day, then people don't want any type of public recording type thing that is going to have the police retaliate against them anymore. On top of that, people are just trying to get food and get their jailing needs met and also make money. And people have to be at shelters by six if they are in shelters. So there's a lot of reasons why people can't or don't want to come. And also, if unhoused people are going to be asked to share knowledge, I think that they need to be paid. But I, so I talked to people about a lot of what has been asked, and people have also just brought a variety of different things. And I think we do just need to start also with that housing and property and police are intrinsically connected. And I know that some people have kind of missed that and have started to be like, well, I don't understand why we're talking about healthlessness. Well, this is a police commission. And I think unhoused people are policed every single day and are still being arrested. Just in two court hearings last week for two trespass orders, which is one of the most common things that the police give out whenever they want to just displace an unhoused person again. And most people do not trust the police and will not call them even though, and people want, want safe, community-led, peer-led groups, night watches, things like that. But people, ooh, I'm getting all lost. But, okay. And then, oh, and just to continue moving away from ServiceNet and social services, interacting with the police, they already do work with the police. It's already harmful. It doesn't do anything good. People get arrested and call, the ServiceNet calls the police on people while they're in ServiceNet. People are not going to go to that warming center in Northampton because it's run by ServiceNet. And that was one of the demands asked, that it's not run by ServiceNet, and that's what's happening. And now something is not going to be used. This city is using money for stuff that demands didn't get met. I think this city needs to be accountable to people and to community members immediately. That needs to be the first thing that happens because all of this can get, every cool radical ask that's happening can get easily manipulated. And then nothing happens. There's no consequences for Northampton or the mayor again and again. Yeah, the police have, and people wanted some examples. This summer, the police slash my friends tent to raid his tent for drugs. This summer, the police slashed my friend's tent to raid his tent for drugs. I've had the police and social services work together to say that somebody was selling drugs, to deny them shelter. They, people want sleeping and nap centers, actual public restrooms that are built, not just porta potties that are not maintained. People want water, that's a, that's a big one. People want access to affordable housing. People want the right to just survive and exist outside, which is the failure of Northampton. So to at least decriminalize that is great. And this can happen in Northampton's policies, ordinances, zoning codes, charter. So there's so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, Koteen and Diane. See the rest of it. Ellen.
Sorry, I know it was mentioned about police training, but I'm not talking about police training when they're already a police person. I'm talking about the training that they receive, I assume in a state, a state institution, before they become police. And that appears to me, and I've spoken to several people in other states, that that has become more and more militaristic. So when police, including the Northampton police, but when police are then moved into paid positions, their training has been one of us and them. And they're the us and we're the them. So I think looking into what kind of training they actually get, where it is, what it looks like. And that goes hand in hand, of course, with getting the various ammunition, cars, tanks from the military. So I'd like to just suggest that there be more examination of that. But I appreciate what everybody was doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Donovan.
Hello, thank you. My name is Sean Donovan and I live in Northampton. Can you hear me okay Dana, other folks? Okay, cool. Thank you for the confirmation. Yeah, I really appreciate what Jose, Tay and other people have spoken to already. I think it's so important to name what, you know, what houseless folks encounter in this town and like how it's even tough to come to this, this meeting. And, and so I do wanna first thank the commission for allowing this public hearing to happen. And I know a lot of y'all are putting a lot of time into this, so thank you for that, first off. So I, I wanna speak from a really specific viewpoint as a psychiatric survivor and as someone who helps lead a peer-led organization in the area. And I also wanna name that I had reached out to two or three people who have had experiences with welfare checks or wellness checks, where police respond to a so-called mental health situation. And none of them wanted to come tonight because they were afraid. And so I just wanna name that, that, you know, some of the people who have the most wisdom to share, they have the most at stake in like speaking publicly. And I've seen that there's some folks here possibly from the Northampton Police Department. So I'm glad they get to hear our words. But I know that there's some people who can't come because as folks have already named, some people are in the shelter by six. Other people fear for their visibility and I just wanna be really clear about that. So I'm gonna try to weave in some of their words into what I share. But I've been working with the Western Mass Recovery Learning Community for the last eight or nine years. This group has been around for longer, for about 12 or 13. But I know people have named even in the subcommittees, this idea of something peer-led. And I wanna talk about what that means. So, so I'm someone who's been hospitalized in psych facilities because of suicide attempts and my own struggles. But a lot of what I experienced came in a context, like I was responding to injustice in my life or, or resources I didn't have. Like, there were real things going on in my life that led to me wanting to end my life. And I've been public about that, so I feel okay doing that now. And a lot of people that I've met through my work in psych hospitals and support groups also have context for why they experience big things in the world, like wanting to die. And so what makes us, our organization peer is that I've had, you know, I worked there, but I've had some experiences in the system. But it also means that we're aspiring not to take power over people. So I wanna be clear about that. Like, when we talk about peer-led, it's not only that people might share the experiences of other people that they support, but they're not trying to overpower them either. And so peer means two things at once. So I wanna, I wanna just put that out there. But, so as part of the Western Mass RLC, which I, which I work for, which I'm a part of the community within, we actually do some supports in Northampton itself, even though we're Western Mass-wide. I've been part of the Alternatives to Suicide Peer Support Group in Northampton for nine years. We offer places for people to, to land, to talk about their experiences of distress and to not be met with force or coercion or judgment. And so some of my friends who have had people call either ServiceNet or CSO or directly to the Northampton Police when people got afraid for what they were sharing, have experienced trauma in response to their pain. And so I wanna just name that sometimes like when we rely on organizations that are embedded in a system of policing to address some of our, our biggest needs with folks on the margins, like we just create more trauma for folks. So I really wanna speak to that, just like name that directly. And I know there are a lot of people working for these organizations that do great stuff. And I'm not naming individuals here. I'm saying the system sometimes is not leading people into the healing places they need to be. So the Western Mass RLC hasn't called the police a lot, even though we've had a lot of tough situations in our centers in Springfield and Holyoke and our Pure Respite in Northampton called a FIA house. And I wanted to name a few of those things that I'm hoping will be helpful for the commission too. So one thing, a lot of people in our community have had trauma with the police or other people with authority over them because of sometimes, you know, racist policing policies, wellness or welfare checks and people being unhoused and hassled because of, you know, being on property that's not theirs. So most of us are committed to finding other ways to deal with conflict when it arises. Two, the community centers, the support groups, the Pure Respite that we hold are not restricted to people based on economic status or eligibility or insurance status or affinity. So like people of many different backgrounds, generations, communities can meet each other on more equal terms. And I don't think there is a space like that in Northampton right now, except for possibly Forbes Library, though it's more incidental than its main purpose for existing. And third, being peer-led means that folks who work for us share similar experiences to those who seek support through the organization. But some of those same people came to this place for support. But it also means, like I mentioned, that we aspire to lead not by power over or responsibility for others, but by sharing power and having responsibility to each other. So I think there's a lot of things we could do differently in Northampton. And I just wanna name real quick that it's time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you, if you can, if you can maybe email it to the commission.
I will do that. Yeah. Thanks for your time, everybody.
Yeah.
Please do what's called here.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Amelia Mosley. I don't know why I screened that, but I did. Amelia.
Hi, good evening. So this is my first time joining this meeting. It's very informative for me. It's, you know, it's interesting to hear all of the different perspectives and I think some of the changes that need to come about. I do have just a couple of questions, not necessarily comments. And this is the place for, is this the place for questions? Okay, great. So my first question is, you know, in terms of, excuse my dogs. In terms of defunding the police department, what types of challenges could that possibly bring to community members as well as, you know, non-community members and the police department? I'm curious to know how that actually looks and how that would play out. And then, and also my second question is, in terms of the racial injustice, just exclusive to Northampton, what are some of the initiatives or the steps that the police department has taken to, to combat these and to, to rectify these and to prevent these from, things from, from happening in the future? And those are my two questions.
Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the commission? Dan.
Yeah, so I'll answer the first, the first question there. I'm not sure that we have the information to answer the second in full. But the first one, so what challenges would come about with defunding the police? That depends on the method and the approach and what we actually recommend and what the mayor actually does along with the city council. There's, there's not one set path and it really does depend on the context. So there are multiple municipalities looking at doing these in all sorts of different ways. Sometimes it's through relying on co-responder programs. Sometimes it's all peer response. There are a number of programs like Kahoots. There's also the Dasher, Right Care. Across the country, there are all of these different programs. One of the biggest things is that none of them resulted in more crime or a worsening or anyone being less safe. That actually decreased crime and made people more safe because they were going to the hospital less, because they were interacting with police less and because police only have a few resources and a few options that they can respond with. So bring someone to jail, bring someone to hospital, writing a citation and going away. There's not, there's not a ton of options that they have. And so having systems in place where they can connect people with the right resources or the people that are responding are experienced and trained and they've had lots of education and, and all sorts of training to go through and work with people, to meet them where they are and get them to the, I'm gonna borrow Sean's words, the healing places that they need to be. So the, the answer is, right now, there's not an immediate challenge because we don't have anything. But from what we're looking at, there seem to be a lot more net positives than, than major issues. The other one, I will defer to the Policies and Services Commission or Subcommittee. If you all have that information, I don't know it offhand.
Does anybody wanna respond to that who's on the committee? If not, I will. Okay, I'll go for it. Amelia, I wanna say that your second question, what has the police done to combat issues like racial injustice? That is right in line with our inquiries to the police and our desire to learn more about any kind of strategic planning, quality initiatives or training that is specifically geared in that direction. And so it's something we're very interested in and feel you stated it very, very clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Arvid Nelson.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. First of all, I wanna say how much I appreciate hearing stories from people like Jose and Sean. I think that takes a lot of courage. And I, I really, really respect that. On October 27th of 2018, a gunman killed 11 people and wounded six more outside the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The very next day, if not the very same day, the Northampton Police Department dispatched a cruiser to be posted outside Congregation Benay Israel Synagogue here in Northampton. I don't think a single person who saw that cruiser thought, even for a moment, that the officer on side was there to uphold, uphold so-called white supremacy. The Northampton Police Department is one of the most, if not the most progressive police departments in the entire country. Whether we like it or not, we live in a society where people have access to high-powered military-style weapon, so-called assault rifles. With the prior cuts to the police budget, Chief Casper had no choice but to remove the officer posted to the high school. That police officer was there to protect the children inside in case something terrible happened. Something so terrible that I don't even like to think about it. But it's the kind of thing that police officers are forced to think about every day. I think the cuts that have already been made were a huge mistake. The mayor's office and the city council have placed our most precious resource at risk.
Please don't use my name if you're gonna be talking about this kinda stuff, buddy.
I didn't interrupt you, Jose. Would you please allow me to finish? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Not one more dime, not one more nickel, not one more cent. That's what I think. In fact, I think we need to restore the budget to what it was prior to these protests, which have been marred by pretty serious acts of violence and intimidation. There was a demonstration outside the residence of my city council persons while she was eating dinner with her children. That's not right. That's wrong. That's wrong. That's intimidation. I think that if we go any further in defunding the, the Northampton Police Department, it's the most vulnerable people among us who are going to suffer the most. People are vulnerable to criminal predation, to exploitation of all kinds. A commitment to the Northampton Police Department is a commitment to protecting the most vulnerable and the most disadvantaged among us in this wonderful community. There is absolutely no separating those two, none. I stand with the Northampton Police Department. And I know I'm not the only one. And I hope that the members of this commission do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Morgan.
My name is Henry Morgan. I'm a Northampton resident. I just wanted to thank everybody who's being part of this, the, the members of it, the people on the committee and all of the people who are sharing their stories. I just wanted to say that I agree with Booker Bush on the concept that the values of a city or any government is reflected by their budget. And I think that if we're going to put money into the police, which is undeniably rooted in coercion and state violence, and we've proven that statistically and through testimony time and time again, that reflects badly on the values of the Northampton city. And I genuinely think that the people of Northampton do not want their tax money to be going to their oppression. I think that they want their tax money to be going to things that will help them, that will take us out of oppression rather than enforcing the barriers that were imposed on us by colonialism and injustice. And, yeah. And again, thank you to all you guys who are being part of this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. JJ.
Hi, yes, thank you. And I just wanted to thank everyone for the hard work that they're doing. First and foremost, I wanna pose what I think is a pivotal question to this commu- committee in terms of how it was put together. It seems that it is a very diverse group, which was excellent, that of course should be the goal. However, the one piece that does not seem to be present is diversity of thought or diversity of perspective. And I think that's really troublesome because again, a lot of this conversation is going to be extremely one-sided and could be detrimental to the overall community who may not be adequately represented. It also leads us to the potential for extreme bias. And I also think that that leads into some of the questions that were posed in terms of what has the Northampton Police Department done. A lot of that information is readily available. It just seems that it hasn't been accurately, appropriately sought out. A couple of things too, just to point out that if you do further defund the police department, one of the things that you need to seriously consider is retention of officers. It is already becoming an issue that officers are going to leave the department. I know that that may seem okay if your goal is defunding. However, what happens is that when you do need to hire new officers, you are not going to be seeing the best of the best wanting to join the Northampton Police Department. So in theory, you are sort of creating a self-fulfilling prophecy. If you cut one of the most progressive police departments off at the knees, you are going to have less well-qualified applicants. And their training is excellent. That is true. They are accredited at the state level, the national level. If you are looking for what they've already done, Chief Casper has put that out. There is a 13-point plan. And of course, there's always room for improvement, but I think the department is open to that discussion. I think they've shown that. They've been at these meetings. Also, there's nothing wrong, of course, with supporting many of the organizations that people are talking. Also, there's nothing wrong, of course, with supporting many of the organizations that people are talking about. That, of course, should be the goal, along with a vibrant, well-trained police department. So I think also, are we pursuing any other sources of revenue other than taking away from one public service instead of finding other avenues of promoting social services that are definitely needed? Again, I would like to just also point out that there are some very common misconceptions being said throughout this meeting. For one, in terms of details, those are not paid by for the city. Those are all privately paid by businesses and residents who hire the police department unless it is through the DPW. And that is a small fraction of the details. Also, if you are concerned, if...
Whatever.
Okay, excuse me. I'm speaking. This is my time. Also, if you're looking at best practice for organizational strategy, you would want to, if your concern is that they are fatigued on duty, your best strategy to combat that would then be to raise, in fact, their base salary, which would then mean they would not be forced to work additional details and therefore be overly fatigued and have their judgment impacted while on the job. So that would just be best practice. Also, just again, common misconceptions, trespassing orders are not given by the police. They are given by businesses and residents. So any issues with trespassing orders is not coming from the police. So I yield my time. I would just really like the bias question and how the members of this committee were chosen in terms of having a well-rounded diversity of thought in addition to all the other categories, which are of course also important to have represented.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Was that a question?
Yes, the first part. It was kind of a mixture of both, I suppose.
I think that you could probably find the information around how the process for being chosen on the Northampton website.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I guess, for a comment because I did look and review the information, but there was no qualifier in terms of thought or perspective. It was only identity and those characteristics, which again, is important. Don't get me wrong. I just would also have loved to see some diversity of thought being prioritized and diversity of perspective.
I think that might be a great question for city council and the mayor.
So I'll jump in to answer your question, which is that everyone that is part of this commission applied by sending a letter of interest to either the mayor or the city council president. And then they made those decisions about who was on the commission. So in those, we asked for a question, we asked, you know, we gave information about who we were, what our perspectives were, what our professional experiences are, what our skill sets were, and then those decisions were made. But we didn't have any input into who else was on the commission. We just volunteered ourselves and were asked to be on it. So if you wanted to know more about the actual process and who wasn't chosen, that would, you'd have to reach out to either the city council president or the mayor because we don't know who wasn't chosen. And I think Lois had something to say as well.
Right. Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, yes, I agree with Dan. That was the procedure. And we don't know how either the mayor or the city council president made their choices. But I can say that having been to a lot of committee meetings and all the commission meetings, you're presum- I, I'm not, I can't make the same presumption that you do because I'm not sure what commissioners think, even having sat through these meetings and participated in them. So I don't know what the outcome is going to be, even having spent many hours at these commission and committee meetings. So I think that you're presuming something that I'm not presuming and I have been part of these meetings since the beginning.
Thank you. The next person is Ashwin Ravi Kumar.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashwin Ravi Kumar. And I teach environmental policy and environmental justice at Amerist College and I come to Northampton a lot. I also serve on Amerist's Energy and Climate Action Committee. So I know what this committee work is like and I very much appreciate all of y'all's service on this committee. So I was here at the last commission meeting and I was pleased with some aspects of the discussion, but I was also quite deeply concerned about some elements of it. And I wanted to speak to that. So we had a strong showing from public commentators and also some folks on the commission to support, to voice support for investing the money that has been liberated from the police department in peer-led programs that prioritize immediately the needs of unhoused people and also look to build capacity with some of the organizations that folks like Sean and Jose have spoken about actively. And we also heard a lot of support to boldly aspire to create new agencies and institutions that are actually capable of delivering real public safety, which the police are wholly inadequate to performing. And we have a ton of evidence for that. At the same time, in last meeting and also just now in some of the public comment that I've heard and I've been distraught to hear, we've been hearing a lot of comments that really remind me of basically Fox News's ideas of having fair and balanced coverage. The idea that being that there are two gen- two equally valid sides to every issue. There was talk of asking community members to speak to their negative and to their positive experiences with cops. There was talk of trying to investigate the police department to see what they're doing good and what they're doing bad. But here's the thing, we actually have an overwhelming, rigorously-examined empirical historical record speaking to the lineage of policing in the United States from slave catchers through convict leasing through Jim Crow and into mass incarceration. We actually don't need new data really to establish that. With the brutal killings of black people still ongoing today, with the killings of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor that spurred the movement that led to this commission's creation in the first place, we have overwhelming evidence that, from, from cities around the country that reforms like body cams, sensitivity trainings, and frankly, commissions like this one to investigate the police do not do enough. They do not work. So we don't really need more evidence because we have it. We have counties from city council hearings this summer from people. We have actual data, although it wouldn't hurt to get a little bit more from the policing practices commissions about how the Northampton cops spend time and money while harming and harassing our neighbors. But we already know that the Northampton police are a harmful institution. That's part of the broader system of policing in the US. And I just want to give a couple analogies that I think will clarify this. If you were concerned with sweatshop labor, you wouldn't consider interviewing people wearing Nike shoes in Manhattan about whether or not their shoes were comfortable. If you were concerned about fracking poisoning water, you wouldn't interview consumers with cheap natural gas about whether or not they like their low electricity bills. If you were, say, concerned about slavery in the 19th century, you wouldn't ask a Parisian noble about whether or not they liked having cheap cotton textiles. Those questions and those perspectives are not germane to the question of, to the oppressive systems that you would be seeking to dismantle, right? So we need to dispense with the notion that there are somehow two sides to this issue that are equal and equally deserving of our consideration and take seriously the empirical record that shows that there is a problem with white supremacy and that problem is not somehow absent in Northampton. We do not need to rewrite a version of Michelle Alexander's, the new Jim Crow that is specially tailored for what we perceive to be a special snowflake, perfect little utopia in Northampton because we're not that and we know we're not that. All right? So we should act now to call for new agencies that are accountable directly to police communities and to people who experience harm, people who are harmed by houselessness, houselessness, domestic violence, all kinds of other stuff. We should learn from the many models for this kind of great work that really does keep us safe from around the country, taking seriously testimonies from folks like Sean who bravely spoke today. And I also just want to say that I was especially distraught by Nick Fleischer's statement today. Nick, you said that we want to look into how police will do strategic planning around community safety, anti-bias, and other trainings that will enhance, quote, "community interaction" or "police interaction with the community." And I just want to say that we've already had a lot of statements and a lot of evidence in this commission, in these commission meetings, highlighting that these kinds of reforms do not work and do not solve the problem of policing harming black people and other people of color and low-income people and unhoused people. And if you, if you're still repeating the idea that we need to look into what the police are doing good along those axes, it sounds like you must not be listening, you may not be listening to those testimonies. You're unable to impart, to parse the empirical evidence that's germane to your charge on this commission or, and I don't think this is what you're doing, willfully lying to uphold a system that benefits you as a white man. I don't think it's the latter thing. I really hope it's not. But I was very distraught to hear that comment and I hope that if you stay on this commission, you will not continue to make those kinds of efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Jackson Coates.
Hi, yes. Just a disclaimer, I'm a reporter as well as a Northampton resident. I just had one question for the, I believe it was, the Contracts and Spending Committee. Ms. Lois Arens, apologies if I mispronounced your name, but you brought up that you found discrepancies with pay information for officers and that seems like a piece of information that we not want to overlook or brush aside. I think if, if you're talking about discrepancies with police officers' pay or potential abuses of payroll, an issue that is pretty common at the state and local level in Massachusetts. We want to make that information transparent. Can you get into some of the specifics around what you're talking about when you say discrepancies with police officer pay?
Lois, do you want to respond or do you want me to?
I think Dan, since you were the one that has been looking into this, I think it would be best for you to.
Yeah, so we requested a number of years' worth of salary information from the Northampton Police Department, including overtime pay, detailed pay. And we also got the base salaries from the, the year's budget. And in a couple of years, and this is, this is an almost manual process of getting all of this data into a workable form to compare. But there were a number of individuals who received either detailed pay or overtime pay, but they did not have a, they didn't have a presence in the Northampton police budget, which means that they weren't necessarily prospectively employed. So the question is sort of, were those officers that were hired, were they filling vacant positions? Did they leave? Is this an issue between calendar year and fiscal year? And so we really still need to understand what those, what those differences are and why there are people who are listed as receiving pay from those without that. And I think Michael also wants to respond.
I, I just had a quick follow-up to that. You said that you requested this information and I know that the committee is going to release its findings in the months ahead. But is there any plan if you find potential, you know, you know, realized discrepancies, realized abuses in payroll system, that that would become transparent? Because it seems like information like that would, you know, be beneficial to the public immediately.
Yeah, absolutely. But the, the question is, you know, is that actually a discrepancy? Or is this just how the information was reported? So we want to make sure absolutely before there's even the hint of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That things are done correctly and that we have the appropriate information before going forward. And then I'll lead to Michael.
Thank you.
Michael, you're breaking up.
Dan, can you hear you?
Okay. How about now? Okay. I think that some of the people that are listed as getting detailed pay that are not listed as police officers here in Northampton may work in the Hampshire County Sheriff's Office or in the state police and they come in to do detail work if a Northampton police officer is not available for that. I think that outside of Northampton Police Department, they can sign up for a detailed job here. But I think Northampton police officers get first crack at the Northampton work. But that might be why someone's listed in one bucket but not in the other.
I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Dana Goldblock.
Hi, my name is Dana. You can hear me okay? Okay, great. So I have, I'm a lawyer locally. I do criminal defense. So I interact with the police a lot and I have a story to tell. But before I tell that story, I did want to respond to what one of the previous commenter said about what he felt was a uniform reaction among everybody in his spiritual community about what police presence meant to them. And I can say as someone that was part of that spiritual community on that day, that, that, that's not the case. And I certainly wouldn't take away anyone else's experience or try to speak for them in that context. I know a lot of people were very afraid and I'm sure a lot of people did feel the way this person indicated. However, I was part of a group of people that is very aware of how vulnerable communities feel about the police and was really uncomfortable and remains uncomfortable, bringing a police presence into a holy place because it alienates these people and it makes these places scary. And we don't want to be a scary community. We want to be a welcome and opening, an open community. So I just want to say that the, and I hear that a couple of times, like that there's all these people out there and everyone who's not in this room has the same opinion as the speaker. And I think that's not true. And I know that in this one spiritual community, there was a very diverse perspective on what the police meant. And there simply wasn't enough time to resolve it adequately for everybody to feel comfortable because events had happened so quickly. So I just wanted to put that out there. I also now want to tell a story, which is that on June 22nd of this past year, so this is during COVID, an officer named Matthew Knowlton from the police department in Northampton stopped a woman who was getting off the bus or had just gotten off the bus, a black woman. And he told her that there had been a report of aggressive panhandling and he wanted to know if she had been panhandled. And she said that she hadn't and he continued to question her about her, what he called in his report, "behaviors consistent with panhandling." And then he was confronted by another black man who told him that he'd been listening to the police scanner and he knew that the report was not for a black woman aggressively panhandling. It was a Hispanic man who was allegedly aggressively panhandling a while back. Why was he hassling someone? And the police officer turned to him and was like, "Don't, don't get involved in police business. This is Officer Knowlton." And the black man then begins to get very loud, attracting a lot of attention to what's going on, which was very effective in ending this racist investigation. More and more police showed. And they told, they told the person who intervened that he needed to be quiet. He became louder and louder. He became profane. He was yelling, "You're effing liars." He called them cowards. He called them lots of bad men. And he said, "The police are liars" and he needed to get out of his community. They reported this as he became incoherent and profane. They specified that he was not protesting police. And they later sought to have him charged with disorderly conduct, which doesn't apply to people who are protesting. So during the encounter, five police officers appeared. They all wrote identical police reports three days later, which they submitted at the same minute, within a minute of each other. And those officers were, trying to remember the, it was definitely Officer Knowlton and Matthew Montini and Andrew Cole. And I think there was another one. Also Sergeant Moody was there and he took off his mask and approached the black man with like, sort of like this, like to, "You don't scare me. I'm not afraid of you" kind of behaviors. And it's all on video. I can't release the video yet because we still need to go to a hearing about whether what the man who disrupted the investigation did was a crime. So I can't show the video because if I show the video, then the testimony begins to conform to the video. So I'm keeping the video. Until then, we'll let all the officers testify. They already put a bunch of things that don't match the video in their report, like the fact that he's incoherent. So I guess that's the experience of vulnerable communities with police, getting hassled and if they stand up for their friends, getting charged with crimes. And it's not a pleasant experience. It's a frightening one. And given that, and I have a question now, I'd like to turn it to Alex and Carol, who I think you're on the Alternatives to Policing Subcommittee. I have really great things about some peer-to-peer stuff that's going on as an alternative to policing, which sounds just fantastic. But it does sound like the committee's still considering some of this like bring a cop along kind of thing. And I guess it's like partnerships. And I guess I want to know, understanding that that's a very, very ordinary patrol call and a very ordinary set of interactions for the police on any given day. That, I guess I want to know what the police, what you feel, if you're still considering these police accompany models, what you feel the police bring in that context? Because it seems like not having an armed paramilitary would be a good baseline. And it seems that what the police would bring in that context, even if they're just silent, is the memory of fear escalation and racism. So I, I would like to hear how, what, what people feel is the, is the reason these accompany police models are still being considered under these alternatives.
Booker. You're muted.
Thank you Dana for your comments. And the reason I brought up all of these choices is we are actually looking for public comment about what to do. When you look at the data from across the country of all of these different models, the good news is people don't go to jail on these mental health calls if there's a mental health provider involved. That's the really good news. The problem is, what do things look like when you, I'm trying to use a data-driven approach, and frankly, the data doesn't give enough information. So I'm just looking at what we're calling the spectrum, or the range of possibilities, which ranges all the way from a police-only approach, which frankly, I don't want, to a partnered approach. And I think if I was involved in that call, I would prefer not to see a police officer with a gun, you know, putting their hand on a gun, to a mental health provider-only approach. To, and actually, I've heard really good conversations about this this evening, or should it even be a psychologist or social worker? Could it be a peer or community-based agency that does it? So we've gone from just, "Let's get the police out," to what should the approach be? And what recommendations should we make about what that should look like? Now, when you get into the details, are you talking about a person who's homeless, who's got a mental health issue? And would you pull in that kind of a peer support group? Or is it a... It's a person who sells themselves for sex, who happens to be a person of color, who's having an issue? And do you have a peer-support restorative justice program for that particular group? And by the way, if you're in Berkeley, you can get that. That's what happens. So when you start looking at the range of possibilities, there are very, there's a range. But there's also, do you have a program that deals with the community that the person at risk is having an issue for? I'm a physician, so I approach things from a medical diagnostic way of doing things. So that's why we're just looking at all of these things. And, you know, I'll say that my bias is I would like to have police not be involved with these things at all. But then, which thing do we recommend, or do we recommend a range? So I'm open to lots of things, and I'm just trying to look for what's, or we're trying to look for what's best, what serves the needs. Portland is a very, Portland, Oregon is a very different place than Northampton. Berkeley, I grew up in Berkeley, it's a very different place than Northampton. So are the solutions in Berkeley the solutions for Northampton? Are the solutions for Northampton the solutions for Holyoke? Are they the solutions for Springville? And I guess the answer is no, that we're different places, what should we recommend? So my, I'm sorry, I've given a really long answer to, but looking at the complexity of these things, I will share with you my own personal biases. I was, we're looking for ways that police don't have to be involved with calls that primarily deal with mental health. But, you know, but what do we recommend, and how do you fund it? And how do you put it in a place so it's accessible for people who need the care?
Thank you. Alex or Carol, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Yes. Okay, hi. As a member of that Subcommittee, we have, as Booker indicated, been looking at the models that are available across the country, and they break down to, you know, police still being involved, to co-responder models that involve police and a mental health crisis person, and a pure, peer-led approach. And, you know, my feeling is, and we'll discuss this further, because as Booker said, we have not really issued our recommendations yet, and the public commentary is very, very useful. There seems to be no problem, in my mind, between the co-responder model that involves somebody who has crisis intervention, de-escalation skillset, perhaps a professional, partnered with a person who is a peer, who has lived experience. So that you don't really have to, even in a co-responder model that we are looking at, you don't need to involve the police. I remember maybe 10 years ago in this city, there seemed to be more electronic collaboration between the different elements that we've talked about and heard about tonight, people who are unhoused, people with lived experiences, who are labeled with mental illness, people who are fleeing domestic violence. There is a large question, which we are examining, which is to what extent do police need to be involved in a primary way in any of that? And, you know, I really do want to address the concern that was voiced earlier about there being just one opinion on this commission? Not. It is much more diverse than perhaps it appears tonight. And we will be coming in with a preliminary report by the end of this month, that I think will reflect the diversity of opinions. But my feeling is, we don't, our charge is not to decide that all police are bad under all circumstances. I think our charge is to examine what's happening here in Northampton, as Booker has said, as opposed to maybe other cities. What do we not like? And how can we change the culture of public safety in this town so that vulnerable people are not routinely having bad experiences? And, yeah, thanks, okay.
All right, thank you. I just want to remind everyone that we're only accepting one comment from each person, just because of, we don't have a whole lot of time. I just wanted to say that. So if you have your hand up for a second time, I'm going to ask if you could please put it down. And if you would like, you are welcome to email all of us your public comments, or we will also have public comment next week at our regularly scheduled full commission meeting. Thank you. The next person is Mark Coates.
Hello. Hi, so one of the things that was... Let's see, oh, I'm just making sure I'm not muted. One of the things that I wanted to mention is that there were previous comments alleging that our police are underpaid, or that there are issues with retention in terms of our not having enough police in this city, and-
Retention refers to turnover, not the number of police.
Okay.
We'd like to have people not to interrupt other folks' comments.
Okay, well, thank you. But irregardless, several people have previously described their perspective as their concerns as a dwindling, a potential reduction of police in the city. And I think that it would be of value for the, for this body to examine comparisons between, not just, as well as salaries, not just in terms of how much in total as a budget, but also examining comparisons between the salaries and number of police in this city as compared to similarly sized cities, not just in this area, but in general. That I think could be of value. I also wanted to briefly speak from my actual experience at a protest for racial justice that was in Northampton, that was very highly reported on, that according to the police's own estimates, had approximately 4,500 people at. And, you know, was very much covered. And it was reported that there were no violent incidences at this protest. And something that I think many people that are wondering about, what would a world without police responding to everything be like? Well, I can say from experience, because I was one of those peacekeepers that was there to make sure that there was no violence at that protest. And we were a team of 30 people, we kept 4,500 people safe for more than five hours. There was no, police interventions were not, there were not police interventions that were needed at this, because we used de-escalation. And we had people who had training in de-escalation and working in social and crisis response. And that was, we responded to several cases of potential, you know, people being angry and frustrated and potential escalation. And we were able to take those, manage to reduce, to prevent all violence escalation in all those situations. And it was interesting to see that we did that all without the need of the police. And meanwhile, the choice of, you know, our police force is, they chose to bring on the state police to respond, because they were worried about all of these protesters, you know, nonviolent protesters that were there peacefully protesting, that they would be a danger to our city. And so that is their, that was the belief, it seems, by them. And so they brought in state police, they brought in local police from other communities out of our budget, which is not covered, of course, like the state police one is, by our state budget. And there was a lot of militarization that was brought to Northampton that didn't even already, that didn't already exist there, that was brought in. There was armored vehicles, and there was state police that had dogs, they had, you know, tasers, all kinds, batons, you know, a lot more armored protection. They had all kinds of, you know, and a lot of them were not wearing masks, which is concerning as well. But in general, just seeing, I feel like a lot of people and protesters, from my own experience of standing in between those protesters and the police, is that seeing more preparation, more militarization, it did not make people less angry or less violent, it made people more upset. And I just think that de-escalation should be definitely made a priority. And I would like to see if those things that I mentioned, thank you, could be looked into.
Thank you. Emily Coffin? No, 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 I'm sorry. You're next, but Noah is first, and then Emily.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My name is Noah, I was born and raised in the Pioneer Valley. I moved away in 2010 and recently returned to finish my degree in urban studies and sustainability. In my opinion, one of the absolute tenets of a sustainable society is demonstrating that it can care for itself and provide for all of its members. I believe this commission has the opportunity to enact real fundamental change for a community that is asking for it. The time has come to reallocate funds away from systems of harm and invest them in meaningful, community-led programs that have a qualitative impact on our most at-risk residents and guides us on the right path towards a more sustainable, healthy future in Northampton. In my opinion, two of the biggest threats to human safety in our community are homelessness and drug addiction. I have lost family and friends here to substance abuse and addiction, and I still have friends struggling under the weight of the criminal justice system, simply trying to survive and stay housed at this point. I believe if there were more substantial programming here, providing genuine care by a community of their peers, these problems wouldn't exist. Instead, people who are suffering are criminalized, dehumanized for their addictions, and the only rehabilitative services provided to them is jail time. Substance abuse and lack of adequate housing are two elements of existence that require empathy, understanding, and compassion to remedy. There are highly trained community members, some of whom are even in this meeting tonight, who have direct experience in these matters that can provide counseling and resources to our neighbors that are directly affected by these bills. These highly trained community members are not the police. Police are not trained in empathy, understanding, or compassion. A one-day training on implicit bias, or the oxymoronic phrase "progressive police", does not negate nearly 200 years of institutional policy, harm, and brainwashing. Even if you think that Northampton police officers are empathetic or that they do have a vested interest in the community, well then I'll appeal to the capitalist interests and point to the work of the Contracts and Spending Subcommittee in this commission and their findings of officers being overpaid and seemingly unnecessary in many instances, specifically to unnecessary overtime pay along with questionable detail work that in no logical system needs to fall on the police's shoulders. Essentially, half of Northampton's top earners in salary are police. Why on earth do they deserve that much money while food banks have to crowdfund and peer-led services are strictly volunteer? The members of this commission have an opportunity to take the first steps in building a new model of community and model rooted in civic virtue, accountability to others, and an equitable future for all of our members. The time is now for community action and investment, the facts are out there for everyone to see. The police don't keep us safe, at least not all of us. Budgets are being defunded across the country, and the people are finally being heard. I ask you all in this commission, please do not waste this opportunity to move our community forward and put Northampton on the right side of history. The time is now to invest in the people, please, thank you.
Emily Coffin?
Hi, thank you all for your service today. I've given you all a lot of resources and evidence on the topic of abolition. There are countless books, sorry, I didn't just start my timer. There are countless books, documentaries, and incredibly well-researched policy platform on the movement for Black Lives. We've seen an outpouring of evidence, activism, and loss of life that has shown the harms of policing. There's an outpouring of scientific knowledge and history of these accounts that clearly point towards abolition of the Northampton Police Department, that abolition of the Northampton Police Department moves our community towards a more free and just world. I have also that you heard that you wanted to hear more personal stories tonight, and so I'm going to take a more personal tone. I want to start by speaking to my experience as a social worker. My work is with families, I facilitate wraparound support teams and family therapy in their homes. Prior to the pandemic, my work involved regularly going into the homes of families whose children were struggling. Some of the families and youth I work with have significant struggles of physical aggression and violence. And believe me, when I imagine my work without policing, it is not something I take lightly. When I think about my work without policing, I am scared, and yet I know it's still work that needs to be done and work that can be done. And I also know how little resources there are out there for my clients, and yet I know there's wealth and budgets in our communities that can be redirected to actually meaningfully support people. I see firsthand what happens when we offer people, especially young people, holistic support that is rooted in building up support for them within their communities. In my work, we pull together people from all corners of the community to wrap around support around youth and families. And I see every day that when we invest in community-based support systems, it really works. And consistently, the looming surveillance of police and the child welfare state always cause limitations in my work, especially when I myself sometimes represent that system, because sometimes I have to call DCF on people, and I have to sometimes call the police. But I don't usually, which I'll get to in a minute. So, but like so many corners of our community, my everyday life at work is inextricably linked to the police state. When I go into someone's home, calling the police is sometimes on the table, and particularly if a crisis is happening. However, I have been able to avoid it in my practice, after rigorous personal reflections and working on accessing what my danger really is in dealing with mental health in the community settings. There have been a few times where I was going into a home instead of police, actually, a last line of defense, really, and I was able to keep the police from being called. But again, this is all rooted in a practice that echoes what Sean talked about, not coming from a place of trying to have power over the person having a crisis. And I know the mental health system, and I do not trust social workers to do this across the board. And oftentimes, I'm told to call the police and have to- And oftentimes, I'm told to call the police and have to work with people. Try not to do that. So as a professional, when I think about breaking up with the police state, I think about the huge undertaking that I know our community members are capable of, an undertaking that requires care in our community to be supported financially, socially, and politically, an undertaking that city officials have placed onto you all, an undertaking that requires departing from giving any more money or investment in violence and the Northampton Police Department. The world, the word reckoning comes to mind, a reckoning with our communities past and present that continues to put people in cages and contributes to mass incarceration. My journey to abolition work in Northampton was not something that was forced. It came when I saw five hundred people coming to city council meetings trying to respond to a movement that black folks have been leading for actual centuries. I'm, I'm running low on time, but I wanted to synthesize the documentary of Thirteenth, which is just like not possible in thirty seconds. But I highly recommend doing that. And much of our economy continues to rest on prison labor and modern slavery. And every ticket and arrest that the Northampton Police Department makes is another drop it in the bucket for modern slavery and violence of incarcerated people. At worst, the system is harmful, violent, enslaving people and deadly. At best, it's supposed to function as an effective deterrent. But this is twenty twenty, and the science is clear that fear and threat of death does not actually help people not commit crime. The evidence is not here, and it has never been here because the function of police in prisons has always been to enslave black folks as well as turn profits. And now we are here in a parallel historical moment, trying to decide reform or abolition. Do we try to just curb police violence or do away with it entirely? Splitting hairs on such issues allow for them to resurface by another name. Complete and total abolition is the answer, and the answer is now. So even the most progressive police departments, and yes, even the Northampton Police Department, funnel more people and therefore give more power to a system of enslavement and immoral profit. This system was never designed to stop crime. It never will stop crime, and it doesn't stop crime. What we need is a well-funded, well-supported department that is actually designed to facilitate and support community members. We need immediately in-depth reallocation of budget. I'll email you the rest, but I have a question for Nick Fleischer and other people on the Police, Policing Services Committee. What about training people to hurt, kill, cage, and enslave our neighbors do you actually think serves our community? Thanks.
Anyone on that Subcommittee? Would anyone like to just want to look at me? Oh. This is true. One second. There you go. You're on mute.
Was there a specific question?
Yeah, my question is, what do you think about training? Like, are people, people and police officers to be violent, to threaten people, to kill people, to threaten putting them in cages actually helps our community?
Well, I can't, I mean, I think we all think that's a horrible idea. I, it's not, it's not something any of us are in favor of.
Can I just ask a follow-up question then? So what do you see the function of policing being if it's not to threaten violence and incarceration and enslavement?
Would anybody on the Subcommittee like to speak to that?
If you would like to respond, if you could just message me and I will unmute you. Or Dan?
Is it okay if I talk?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Emily. Yeah, you know, I think, I think all of us have a range of ideas about what police is. And I, and I just want to assure you that so many of us have traveled that spectrum. And so, you know, the best, the best answer I could give before any of this happened was the common response is, well, police are there to keep us safe. Well, now we know, now we know because of the scores of people that have spoken in our community that that is not true. And so we're learning. And so one of the things that this Subcommittee is doing, we took a look at the training and we're like, okay, how are police trained? Someone also recommended that we look at how police are trained prior to even having a position. And so we're looking at that range of training. And, and, you know, quite frankly, that training is written by and conducted by the same people that we're talking about, by police. And so we're looking at all aspects. And so I think, you know, to, to assure you perhaps, what do we think the police is for? I think, I think many of us have different ideas about that. And we're all trying to do some unbelievable due diligence to get the information, look at it, share it. And we push back at each other all the time in this position. And I want you to be assured of that. And I think you can see that if you come to some of our meetings. I'm going to speak for myself firstly. I have learned so much from people on the Commission, but more from people tonight and prior to this during the summer. I hope you have faith in this process. I, I'm, I have faith in it. What I think, as Carol said, we were commissioned, charged to do one thing, look at the operation of the Police Department, and that's what we're doing. And based on that look, based on that review, we're going to make some recommendations. And, and those recommendations are going to be from the heart, from the community, and they're going to be varied. And, and who knows, maybe at the end of our process, we're going to be unanimous with our recommendations. I don't know. I'm so proud of these people on this committee, and I'm so proud, and we're so proud of the residents of City. Telling us their stories. And we believe in those stories. So, and that's going to work around your question. I just want you to know, Emily, we're in a process. And so I want to trust that process, but I'm also willing to be shaken up by it at the same time. So thank you, thank you for that, those great comments that you made.
Thank you, Cynthia. I just want to thank you, Emily. These are really important questions. I mean, they are the questions that we are all struggling with. But we also have to look at the realities that are out there and how, how we move from point A to point B. And that's, we're going to be using the input from tonight and other places to try to figure that out.
Yeah. The next person is Danielle Amadeo.
Hi there, everyone. Good evening. Thank you to our, our Commission. I just want to say thank you for your work. I know it's been many hours of calls like this and reading and, and reeducating outside of your meetings. So I'm grateful for the work you're putting in. My name is Danielle Amadeo. I use she/her pronouns. I am the Chair of the Northampton Arts Council. I live in Ward Three. And I just want to echo some of the calls that we've heard for crisis response and peer-led public safety. I think that my ask for the Commission is, is it a big plea really to all of you? To make a bold and a big ask. From what I've heard from folks on the call who are advocating on behalf of Northampton Police, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of fear. And I think when I hear folks on the Commission reiterate sort of norms, I'm hearing a lot of fear. Like, people are really afraid of what our city is going to look like without police. And I'm just asking people not to be afraid. I'm asking you to trust what a lot of friends, neighbors, colleagues, strangers have, have presented tonight and have been presenting for, for months and, and years. And as someone else pointed to, generations and centuries, that there is actually a way forward that, that doesn't rely so heavily on the police structures that we know, but actually could be something a lot better. And we're couching this in fear, couching it in discomfort. But it could actually be something really hopeful and exciting. And it could be a system that makes it possible for all of us to, to call in a complaint or call in a report and know that a friend is on the other end of the line, not someone who represents a system that's really terrifying and life-threatening to people. So I just want us to move a little bit away from the language of fear, a possibility of a new department that's peer-led, that's community-based, public service, does not have to be scary. And, and to folks like, like maybe who are actually have Northampton PD in their name, it's not scary for you either. Like, you're still part of the community. Like, you're not going to be banished. You're not going to be voted off the island of Northampton because we have other departments that are meant to serve people in this way. But it's going to be a reimagining that we all of us need to be a part of. And that actually brings me to a point about data sets. Someone earlier mentioned the importance of having data-driven solutions, which I love. I'm all about it. But we're missing a really key data set here. I've heard so many folks on the call name that there are houseless community members, there are community members that have been interrogated and intimidated by police that are afraid to speak to you. And when I, I'm, I'm like begging the folks on the Commission to find a way to talk to those folks. Right? Like, those are the voices you need to hear. JJ's comment about bias, I think, doesn't really stand. I don't think it's possible to have a bias against a worldview that determines everything about our society. Right? Like, our world is already pro-police. Our world is already, white supremacy, we're all swimming in. So we don't, it's not a bias to say, you know, let's hear from people who are suffering from white supremacy. It's really not a bias. But it is a bias to say that we know that there are community members who are afraid to talk to you and you're not finding ways to hear them. So, so I have a question, which is, sorry, I'm referring to my notes here. Does the Commission have plans to work with our community organizations to speak directly to our houseless neighbors or anyone who's afraid to come forward or doesn't have the means to come forward on a Zoom call? One. Two, can you please find a way to do so before you make the recommendations and, and your report? I know there are two levels of reporting, but before your first report, can you please work with Sean Donovan from Western Mass ROC? Or Emily, or any of the people who are showing up here tonight to advocate for their friends and neighbors and, and our community members? Can you please reach out to them and find a way to have an anonymous listening tour? Or do a walking tour? I, I'm not sure what the best way to do it is. It's not my field, but there are people on this call who it is their field and they do have recommendations. So I would ask, can you, can you do it? Like, question number two. And then question number three is, can you commit to sharing Sean's, Western Mass ROC's best practices and all the best practices that people have named in your report? Whether those are your recommendations or not, I think it's important to aggregate that data. So maybe it's a shared drive for folks on this call to, to drop their stuff. And I know I've heard people say that they've emailed a lot. But can you make a shared drive that's public, that people can see? And include that in your official report? So those are my questions. And I don't know if there's, if I can keep going with a comment, one more comment? All right, I have a little bit of time. I'm going to do it, and then you can cut me off. Okay. I just wanted to pick up on the Nike analogy. Ashwin made such a great point about how you wouldn't go to Manhattan and talk to people who wear Nikes and ask if the shoe is comfortable if you're concerned about factory labor. Just as a teaching moment, I'd like everyone, everyone on the call, regardless of your position, to think a little bit about that analogy. Would you talk to someone who suffers from, who, who benefits from a system about the way in which it harms others? Obviously not. So let's just keep going. Thank you, thank you all.
Did you have a question that you wanted us to respond to now? If so, if you, do you mind repeating it really quickly? Oh, I have to unmute you.
You have to select.
You're still, you're still muted. I'm sorry, I think Dan and I are both trying to unmute you at the same time. We keep canceling it now.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So question one is, does the Commission have plans to work with community organizations and our organizers to speak directly to neighbors who are afraid to come forward in this forum? Question number one. Question number two is, can you commit to doing so before you make your report? And then question number three is, can you create an open source sharedoc for all of the resources out there and commit to including that in your report as well?
Can I answer one and two, and maybe Dan answer three?
Yeah, and Josie also wanted to respond too.
Okay. So, yes and yes. I think we are still trying to brainstorm ways to include voices from folks in the community that are not able to, to come to a Zoom meeting, to include them in the conversation as well as hearing what their public comments might be, whether it's anonymous or not, as well as including that information in our final report. So doing that before we complete a report. And was it Josie or Dan would like to?
Yeah, I think that it's Josie, myself, and Javier also. So I can tell you right now, I've already been in contact with Sean quite a bit, getting people involved and working with a number of other folks. We got recommendations for the Northampton Recovery Center and a few other groups as well that do all of these outreaches. So how to bring that segment of the population in. So people who are struggling with substance use, but also people who are unhoused, and trying to really broaden the scope of comments we're accepting. We also just got confirmation about protections that we can offer to people for conditions of anonymity when they're, when they're concerned or afraid to make public comment. We just got those really like this morning afternoon. So we are working on it, but, I mean, I don't know if it'll happen before the preliminary report. We're also beholden to some, to some rules about time when we start to do these things, but we will do our best. And it will definitely be before the final report, the third part before handing it over. We are working with the city. We've created a repository for the Commission to collect information, and we're working with the city to add that to the website to make it public for everyone so that everyone has access to anything that we find, anything that we're working on and all of that information. So then I'll pass it to Javier and then Josie.
Can, can you hear me? I just want to so point out what Dan was saying. So, and this is, I think, is a good opportunity for us to invite everybody here and anybody in the community to, to go to the Subcommittee meetings. So for example, tomorrow in the Alternative to Policing Subcommittee, we're going to have two speakers, and one of those is going to be Sean Donovan, who is going to talk about their experience and the work that they had been doing for the last twelve, thirteen years. So we're looking to have the voices at it. We're looking to, to get all the information about those different systems. And I would again invite everybody here to attend the Subcommittee meetings where probably that kind of discussions are going to be happening.
All right, and then Josie?
Yeah, so I also want to say that I've had a couple of community members reach out to me. And then I'm also actively trying to search for anyone who wants to interact with me and to me an email about interacting with these definitely impacted communities. I definitely think we need a lot more of their testimony and their voices, but I also recognize the very real kind of ramification that comes from doing that in this kind of format. I do want to say that I would, I would love to be able to get together through Zoom, obviously. But I also don't know, like, what the rules are on that. Like, being like, hey, I'm available from like six to nine on like Friday or something like that. But I would love to, you know, get in contact with me, send me an email. I'll definitely get to it. Is that what you want us to throw out there?
Yeah. Javier had a one-minute response for Emily's question that was earlier. I apologize, I didn't, I didn't see that he was trying to flag me down, so I have to unmute you.
Yeah, I, I want to build up in a little, a little bit more about what Cynthia was answered to Emily, which I find really, really good and super interesting. Because the fact that which I find really really good and super interesting because the fact that we have been talking a lot about white privilege and also the lack of self knowledge about privilege within the commission. And that has been a a conversation that subcommittee subcommittees have had, uh, the the wider commission have had. Obviously, personally, I would love as 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 an immigrant, as a brown man, as a person with an accent, that if I'm telling a white person, I'm being the focus of violence, police is harassing me. I would hope that that person would say, I believe you, we're gonna do something about it. And not they are that they are gonna move and tell me, you know what? We we need to talk to the police, we need this evidence, this other evidence, this other evidence. And and you know, in being really selective about that. So I think that we we we're working on that. We're working uh as as a person of color myself, I bring these issues to the table. I know that my fellow commissioners also bring this to the table. We have been talking about this. I feel really proud of how the policing, Alternative to Policing Subcommittee is is talking about this. And 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 I think that as 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 much as we keep talking about this, we're gonna be able to realize that most of the stuff that we are coming that are half of the road are based not in what is needed, but in our point of view of privilege, and that need to change.
Thank you. Uh, the next person is Susan Balaban. Susan, all right, oh, gosh.
Uh, so Susan, you should see a button that appears on your screen that says unmute. There we go.
There we go. Um, I had a cut, just a couple of points of clarification, just because it's like we're a lot of people have used the term data. And I context is always really important and, you know, sort of saying, yeah, for instance, the the idea of the salaries of police being the largest in in uh in the town. As and I it would be helpful to know as compared to people who do what other type of work. I know for a fact that police are paid more than firefighters who are not paid enough to do what they do um and who have pretty piss poor health insurance, considering the level of risk that that they are that they take on. My other, the way that that we've talked about salaries tonight, we've talked about it as if the police determine that. And my understanding is that even to the level of HR, that's part of town government who establishes what salaries are. Um, even the idea that, um, can you hear me? Even the um, the policy which was most certainly foreseeable um of seniority that I think exists throughout town um town departments, which um which made it so that the 10% of funding, um, I'm sure that you all must know this, um, but it hasn't come up at all, that the people that the people who were no longer hired out of the police academy and the people whose positions were eliminated were um pretty much uh everyone of color and every woman, or I shouldn't say every woman, but mostly. So and if um and if I what I'm saying is not true, it would be really helpful to know precisely how it's not true. The other, so the other point that came up, I've heard several people speak several times to police coming from outside either to do details or to um to be there at um at um at protests. And that's a statute that's um both on a state level and on a municipal level and on a county level that the police have to have a certain amount of people per capita. And the again, with the town of Northampton has these mutual has uh established relationships with the state police and with the East Hampton police, both of who who are who are not subject to our, um, we can't um in any way influence their policy. So for example, um, whereas Northampton does um voted to not allow the police to use tasers, good stuff, um, uh, the because there are, I think that there there are six full time, uh, or there are six people, we're somewhere below the national average per capita. Um, I think it's like 2.08 um as opposed to 2.5. So that we have to call in, um, that they are mandated to call in police from these other areas. Does any of this sound familiar to anybody? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay, because it would be, I think that it would, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not afraid. But I think that it would be helpful to to give some contextual information in order to, you know, to have some, to have clarity. You know, and I I won't attribute why anyone is saying what they were saying, what they are saying to any particular attitude or ignorance. I am certainly very interested to know why people feel how they do. And it is very clear that there needs to be more funding. The state hospital was closed during the the early eighties. There have been homeless and mentally ill people who have been underserved in this community since then. The Department of Mental Health has never had the money to fund them. Try calling Adult Protective Services to get help for for people. Um, I'm a psychologist, um, and I've worked with a number of people who have tried to get help. Recently, a friend died in their home because of, it was COVID and she was, she feared going to to the hospital. And I called the police because they were able to check on her. And that's my last point, actually. I don't know a whole lot about abolish and defund, but I did a little bit of homework. And it seems like like in in Europe where the program, where they defunded specific programs targeting um drug use and um and prosecute prosecution and um very punitive.
Can you wrap that up?
Yeah, sure, I'll wrap it up. Um, so so what happened was they thought about it beforehand and they got, they had an eight agencies ready to go. We have no, no one here that's an expert in harm reduction. We have no, no one who's worked in the hospital when they've decided we're not gonna call the police anymore. So.
Sorry, if you have any additional comments?
But I could ask, why? Why don't we have specific things that we want to defund as opposed to things that we don't want? Like, we don't want people to call the police for a lot of things. But why don't we have professionals who who are able to speak to defunding like real movements?
Dan, I see your hand.
Yeah, so um in terms of people speaking to it, um, you're welcome to come to the next. Um, I know one of the subcommittees has a meeting that's gonna have speakers coming. We're also working with a couple of more groups um from people, um, from groups who are successful um in transitioning responsibilities and funds away from police and to other services. So basically, um, most of the time it's mental health, um, but saying, all right, police no longer responded 20% of these calls or 20% of their calls which were mental health. And now it's another responder that's coming through. So we have them coming in um to sort of look at that. So that um, there will be that. Um, and you know, the commission has done tons of research, um, scouring through academic articles. I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, but um in terms of just response modeling, Carol um has sent, I think there's 20 plus academic uh peer reviewed articles um on these different types of responder programs. So this isn't just at at a whim, it's not that we're trying to just take away money and that's it. There's still a plan or desire for process um and for crisis response. It's just to have the right type of response to the right problem.
Right. So so it would be, it would be very helpful to be specific because the police don't make any money on if they're called to go along with a firefighter to to a call. Like that's not, they're not receiving a lot of funding for that. What they lost was the budget for hybrid cars and um a number of personnel.
So I mean, we can talk about the decisions. There were a number of precedents that could have been done. They could have done a wage freeze instead of doing the the wage increases and still kept people. There's a whole bunch of things that could have done, been done. But that's a question for the chief as to why she chose that specific route.
For HR.
And HR, it's it's those, like they work together, it's not. Well, um, so those are the questions, we don't have the answers to those, um, because that was just a policy decision. We can look at what was done in the past. You can say in 2010, at least, there was a wage freeze and a hiring freeze. And there's actually a reduction of police officers, but not an increase in crime. But anyway, um, do you wanna respect the time limits? Um, but but yes, we are looking at all those things, but some of them are also outside the purview of what we have and what we know at this point.
Thank you. Rebecca Martin.
Unmute. Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me now? Yes, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Martin and I am a community organizer and advocate, uh, peer advocate in Northampton in Florence Ward Five. And I am a survivor of domestic violence and a disabled single mother of two. I just wanna speak to my personal experience um and understanding as I don't, I don't wanna speak for other people um or any agencies at this time. I just wanna say that that blue uniform holds a history of abuse and power. It elevates the wearer out of the neighborhood and out of accountability as we have seen this year. It has become evident that it has elevated them out of the very laws that they are paid to uphold. I am not anti officer. I am anti tyranny. The very sight of that blue uniform alienates the humans wearing that. When they enter a situation with a person who is traumatized or in crisis, that is an instant shutdown of any realness that can happen in that room. Peer to peer means equal, ground to ground, we're standing on the same thing, we have the same experiences. And I'm not saying officers are not traumatized. I'm not saying officers have not had horrible experiences. I'm not saying they're not struggling with their own private lives or finances. They have many of the things that we on the streets and in the communities experience. They're human. But that badge and that gun and that immunity that they have changes things in an instant. When a peer meets a peer, not in a uniform, not elevated, it can, people can get through. People can recognize things like the difference between somebody who has experienced extreme trauma, rape, or is having simply a sugar, uh, what is it called, a diabetic overload, separate from having somebody on drugs or having a drug interaction versus somebody on drugs, recreational drugs. With empathy, we can communicate with each other where everyone has dignity. And we get through to people who are unreachable otherwise. Many of our community members and friends have ended up in jail or in worse situations with deeper trauma because of their trauma not being recognized by their trauma being brought up by that blue outfit, that blue uniform, or just in the presence of a gun. There has to be other ways. There are other ways. This year, I had to fight very hard to get my needs met. When my leasing office was trying to intimidate us and to quiet us. And my building had some very serious fire hazards that were overlooked because I was just a tenant. What possibly could I know? What I knew was that it was exploding in a percussive way that was not usual. Now, I'm not here to complain about the way that was handled. What I'm here to say is that there needs to be a non emergency first responder who has more avenues than to just call police, fire or ambulance, period. There needs to be a resource list that they have and they need training. Even the non emergency responders, I'm talking about not the non emergency police line for Northampton. They need to have more of a resource list. Now, a lot of people have told me, go to 211. Oh, you can't remember that crisis line that your friend needs? Or that that housing emergency line, you can't remember that? Call 211. How many times I have called that number and been giving outdated information?
Rebecca.
Or given a.
Sorry, your time's up. Do you wanna finish?
Okay.
You can finish that sentence or just finish that.
Uh, just that the training needs to be there and the fact that all things should not rest on officers' shoulders. There needs to be other avenues and peer to peer really does work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen McRath.
Ellen McRath. Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, I just had a few points I wanted to make um about, first of all, the commission and I I'm in, I'm in um business, accounting, finance. And my first issue with this whole defunding of the police that I think everyone should seriously think about is that normally you come up with a plan or come up with a budget of what needs to be cut before you cut a budget. So this was done backwards. They cut the budget and now we're deciding what's needed and what's not needed. So first of all, in my opinion, and probably many other business people, this is backwards. Um, second of all, I just want everyone to remember that the Northampton Police were recognized as the leading department in the nation and other Departments of Justice were sent here to learn how to do things. So I guess that's out the window. I don't know, I guess that just all of a sudden just falls. Thirdly, I have a personal story from my own daughter who was at Northampton High School. And she was receiving, along with many other people, pornographic Snapchats. There was some man jerking off and he knew her name and he knew other people's name and it was personal. And she didn't tell us, she didn't tell me, she didn't tell her dad. She went to the school safety officer, Officer Wallace, and he gave her help. And that's because she trusted him. He had a rapport with the kids, they don't go to their parents for this, these teenagers. So now that was cut. And maybe if they had come up with a plan before defunding the budget, you know, it could have, maybe they would have realized that that was an important position that maybe should have been kept. So I have a, I have a problem with this, how this is all being done, I just think it's out of order. Second of all, since we're talking about finances, I'm wondering if the city has thought about that they make 10% off every hour of detail and they're gonna lose that out of their budget too. Just curious. And also I'm wondering, I was on another call when this commission was being discussed and the group talked, I think someone asked in a chat that could there be a police officer on this commission? And again, I think it would have been a great idea. One even, just one, because maybe they could have contributed something that was important. And along with that thought, I'm wondering if, this is my question for the commission, have you spoken to the police chief or anyone in the Northampton Police Department? Or do you plan to about what the job entails? And what they they might have ideas of, I'm sure, of what they think maybe, yes, a social worker could respond to that they're not needed. Or a kid who won't go to school and the mom calls because he won't get out of bed. You know, maybe, maybe you should go to someone that's been doing this job for years, whether you agree with how they do it or not, they do have some valid information. That's it. Thank you. Could you answer my question about the police chief, please? Or the Northampton Police Department, if anyone is going to go talk to them?
Yeah, I can, I can answer. So.
Thank you.
And this actually takes, there's someone who had a question that they put in the text as well, which is not about the composition and not having an NPD officer, and that's just the city's process. They do not put members of the department that's being reviewed on a commission or a committee that is reviewing it. That's just the process for the city. The question, do we plan on speaking with them? Yes, in very specific ways. We have questions that have to be answered and we've been asking for information from them and they've been giving it to us in, in log form, in detail form, in responses and all of those. So as we ask for information, as we ask for clarification on things, they respond and they give us that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. JR.
Was that? I feel like I got too angry.
No, you did midpoint.
JR.
Yep, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank you guys first and foremost for hosting this and doing this. I know that the work it takes, it's, it's a lot to have these conversations and this word or this, this discourse. And I just want to introduce myself. My name is JR. I go by He Him. I'm a local advocate in the valley and I'm here to speak, speak on the behalf of abolishing the whole entirety of the police departments across America, including Northampton. Just to give a quick, just to give some quick context, last month, a biochemical terrorist rally happened in our little community of Northampton. This rally should have not occurred. The fact that a police department gave an escort to these folks makes it apparent that our police departments are working on the side of biochemical terrorists. They have repeatedly, time and time again, shown that they will not comply with mask mandates or any other safety precautions. So yes, I will call them biochemical terrorists. Our police do not see a problem with these neo biochemical terrorists. And it's plain obvious, when a business owner on Main Street called to notify them about a health hazard and a public disturbance, the police officer said, and I quote, "We do not have the resources for this." This is a blatant lie and an obvious attack on defunding the police, similar to that of the chief of Northampton Police Department defunding certain parts and then blaming it. Or his, or you know, the people blaming it on the defund the police, like, oh, he, they selected these parts to be defunded and now that's the reason for these things that are caused. That's the reason for this tension. The NPD have made it obvious that they want, that they need to be dismantled by the people that they serve. We, the people, demand that a new department is directly accountable to the communities in Northampton most harmed by policing. We demand solutions that are community-led, not police-led, nor police collaborated. We demand that a new crisis response department to be led by the community and with the community. Must I remind y'all that this commission should be looking to re-envision a blueprint for a community-led public safety for, public safety for the city, not rewriting a report about what we already know. Must I also remind y'all that the city council and the people worked hard to reclaim almost a million dollars from the police budget this summer to phase away from policing? Yet Mayor Narckowitz has not given a plan yet and has shown no commitment to reallocating and reinvesting in our community. For almost half a year of members of the community, members and city councilors have been telling you that policing does not work in this community, nor communities across America. We do not need more reading and studying. The time to act is now. We needn't to demand more police training, but more community-led based help, not police training. The entire system of policing is rotten and we all know it. It is functioning exactly as it was meant to. There are no elements that should be saved or supported and it is folly that people recommend such, such blasphemy. Its origins as a slave patrol to its current reality has been a system of white supremacy and oppression. It all must go. We, the people, demand this. Now, are we going to keep arguing over whether the police are doing something right or something bad when we have tons of evidence throughout, throughout hundreds of years? Through the span of the entirety of humanity, that policing is wrong. That putting people in jail instead of rehabilitating them is wrong. And it only harms our society when someone goes into a prison and comes out even worse when they came into it. We know that this is wrong. So why are we arguing about it? Why are we trying to collaborate with these monsters, with these biochemical terrorists using a disease to their advantage? Are you kidding me? A police department escorted these monsters into our city who spit on our community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great time and you guys have a great evening.
Gabriel P.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. So my name is Gabriel Peoples. First off, I want to thank everyone on the commission for giving your time and service to our community. I am a social worker. I work, among others, in Hampshire County and I'm a resident of Northampton. I work with trauma survivors. And to a point that was made earlier, I just want to say as an aside, as a Jewish person, an armed officer being present outside of a synagogue has never made me feel safer in entering a place of worship and has in fact made me feel less able to access those spaces. So I just want to say that since that point was made earlier, that doesn't speak for me as a Jewish member of our community. So I would really like to advocate for peer-led programs that are directly accountable to the communities. In addition to awesome programs like the Recovery Learning Center, I would also like to advocate for housing-first programs to be added to alternative policing. There's a lot of research about how housing-first programs have saved communities money because they address a problem before it leads to emergency services being needed or other crisis supports. I would, I would like to note that police and social services like ServiceNet and CSO are all reactionary services. So they only come into play after something has happened and we really need to take money from the police budget and invest in services that, and community support programs that, sorry, that directly serve the needs of our community members before any sort of crime or crisis occurs because that saves money because crisis services tend to be more, and emergency services tend to be more expensive. And if you're supporting people before it gets to that point, it is more budget effective and helps people before things get to a more intense space. Speaking to the request for data around these programs, I just want to quote Miriam Kaba, who is an activist and educator, who pointed it out in an interview with Chris Hayes, that a call for proof or evidence ignores that alternatives policing aren't getting the financial support, like the millions of dollars that police get in Northampton or the over a hundred billions of dollars that police get across the country. And we need to fund these initiatives, alternative initiatives, and then we can get the data and proof that shows that they work because we already know that our current system of policing doesn't work. So we need to invest money in the community-centered alternatives that have some preliminary evidence, but we can't get more evidence until we fund those supports. You can't, you can't do research without financial backing. So I would like to advocate to reallocate funding from the police towards peer-led community accountable programs. And I ask that housing-first initiatives be added to the alternative policing that have already been looked at. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Lilith.
Hello, Lilith.
Hi, um, I would just like to say I am here first here today to learn from members of the community as a youth. Further, I completely agree with Booker's prior statement as a 15-year-old who has had the police threatened on them during a mental health episode. Going beyond the prior statements on police presence in spiritual communities, this time focusing on the neurodiversity or specifically my experiences. I have ADHD and primer traumatizing experiences with authority and an armed police presence anywhere is a constant reminder that police have the ability to take away my life and staccans for the way in which I react, mostly outside of my control. To comment on police in schools, as it was prior mentioned, although I attend outside more of Northampton, it is a constant pain and a constant reminder to have their presence within my school. An autistic boy was shot in the back by police for having a violent breakdown. These atrocities, even if not committed by the Northampton Police Department, still affect the department. Northampton does not exist in a vacuum. Although the policing within Northampton is presumed to be progressive, middling for these, for their continued existence as part of a historically oppressive system. Northampton should not settle for passivity in this system. Northampton should disown it and further strive to be leaders in this country and strive to treat unhoused, people of color, the disabled, et cetera, with the respect and the love and decency and safety, simply the ability to thrive, which they deserve. Author more a sustainable system of many of the alternatives talked about today and for the research by this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Oberholzer.
I can hear you.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name's Elliot. Stay there, pronounced. I used to live in East Hampton, Boston, but I care a lot about this community and I hope to still to be a part of it. So I have two main things that I want to say. The first thing I'd like to talk about is something that Danielle Amadeo brought up so beautifully, which is that there, there's a lot of sort of speculating and fear about the future of this community. And I think I would see a lot of anxiety, particularly among white folks about the future. And particularly about being asked to think about the future in a way that they never have before, in a way that they don't have the systems of control that we've become used to as white folks in our society. And so I just wanted to pin our vision instead to a future of Northampton where the members of the Northampton community who don't stick around or who aren't alive to stick around, who aren't safe, who are pulled out of that community by incarceration are there instead. A vision of the future of Northampton where folks don't leave to go somewhere else where it's safer to live in their skin, where it's safer to live houseless, where they can survive and can thrive. The futures that we're losing by having the police so vastly outweigh the future of a slightly better class of police officer that other folks have brought up as another potential future. There is so much more than Northampton could be and so much more that it could grow if we go towards a future where policing isn't choking. So that's one thing. The other thing that I'd like to speak about is that, and I've spoken to some members of this commission of this before, is that I used to be an evaluation consultant. And as an evaluation consultant, I put forward a lot of reports that nobody listens to. So I have some recommendations for your recommendations. It's going to be fun for everybody. As someone who's made a lot of recommendations and just a couple of things that I'd like you to keep in mind. Your recommendations should be clear and straight. I know that it would be tempting to say, oh, we could do this or we could do this. And here are some options. Pick one. You have most information about this that we're ever going to get. You have the best perspective we're ever going to get. Pick one, go for it. Tell us why it's the thing that we should be betting on. Second, they should be bold. Again, Danielle said this so clearly. This is the time. Take the energy that we're giving you and run with it. Give us something bold and exciting to push for. Third, they should be data-informed, but not about data. You are the data collection body. Recommendations that go further into what data we still need, what data we should continue to pursue, they aren't going to be effective. Not, not only because people don't get excited about data, which I understand, but because this, you are the data collection body. Further iterating more work into more and more specific explorations of data isn't going to be effective. Not least because, as Gabe says it so clearly, at some point you have to try the thing before you can generate enough data to see if it's working. And the last thing, and this is kind of the big one, get commitments for your recommendations. You can't just send a recommendation floating out into the world and hope that it happens. Your body, before it dissolves, has to get commitments from the major players that you need to make your recommendations happen. I know that that may not be possible for you with a lot of the major players that are going to be necessary here. But we have a lot of folks here who are on your team who are ready to go. Get as many commitments as you possibly can because that's what gives you recommendations to you. That's what lets them move from the recommendations to actual plans. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate everything that you're putting into this. And thank you so much as well, interpreters and transcribers. See you later.
Thank you. Our next person is BJ's iPad.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to say, I've heard a lot tonight about us against them regarding the police. And I just think this is the absolute wrong approach. Comparing our police department to national police officers and national police departments with their statistics of racism and beating and killing, it's wrong on so many levels. We don't have that here. And I, I can't help but see the hypocrisy in that this whole Black Lives Matter movement where, you know, the people are being treated because of a certain way because of the color of their skin. They're turning around and they're doing the exact same thing to police officers because they have a badge. And it's wrong. I mean, you need a perspective on every level. You need anti-police, you need for-police, and I'm not seeing a lot of for-pro-police issues here. I, I would love to echo the whole sentiment of Ellen McGrath when she said, this thing was just done backwards. You don't defund police and then find a solution. You, you get the solution first and then you defund accordingly. And this was just done wrongly. And so I hope that you all consider that to, you know, interview and talk to various officers in the chief of police, anybody, because they do have a perspective that needs to be listened to. Now, I also want to just quickly add with Dana Goldblatt, who was talking about her client. I was at that incident on Main Street. This man was so enraged that he became incoherent, screaming at the officers in their face, like right in their face, spitting when he's talking and screaming. And for her to think that that, that there was nothing warranted, that he was doing everything okay and not disturbing the police, I mean, or disturbing the peace, I felt in fear for my own safety. He was disturbing my peace. And if the police weren't there, and let me tell you, they were very restrained, very held back because they evaluate. because they evaluated the situation and thought, "This guy is incoherent." And so the, they didn't arrest him. They tried to walk away. He followed them using the C-word, the P-word. It was atrocious. And this is what our police officers deal with on a daily basis. The other incident I want to, um, talk about personally is the Trump protest that was in downtown North Hampton. My car was stuck, unfortunately, in the center of the intersection, in the middle of the protest. People were getting violent. They were coming at my car. I actually got out of my car in fear for my safety. I was escorted by a police officer to safety. I was shoved because I had a mask on. And, you know, with, uh, people thought that police presence was excessive. And there was state police, East Hampton, North Hampton. The National Guard wouldn't have been excessive in that situation. Those people were out of control. And these are the things that are gonna continue to happen because there is so much unrest in this country, all over the place, and in our own city. And I'm concerned about our own city, not our own, the whole country. And I've heard statistics and, and examples of things that are happening nationally. Not one of them ever happened in North Hampton. We don't kill people. We don't cage people. And what's, what about this tank? We own a tank? I mean, come on, people, you gotta listen to the facts and, you know, the, the decent facts. Not all this crazy statistical, national, nothing to do with our community information that people are putting out there. I just hope you really listen to the people in this town that pay the taxes, that vote and that, you know, are absolutely affected by defunding the police. We need the police. And where are you gonna be if you need them, but you defunded them and they can't come to, on your call or to save you or to help you? I mean, it's crazy. We are in a crazy time. Twenty twenty is the worst on record in a very long time, at least in my lifetime. And it's gonna get worse. And we need the police. So please consider getting their opinion. And people like me, I'd be more than happy to talk to any one of you. And I'll end there because this meeting is really going on late and I know you all want to probably get back to your lives. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Manny Pentato. No, not, it cuts off, but Manny.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, my God, it's so great to see all of you there. Dana, you spoke beautifully. I love to see all the former city councils in there, all my friends, my, my comrades. And just one negative. I'm sorry, the last person that spoke there, I was there at the, what she's talking about, the North Hampton, uh, Trump rally. It did look like, uh, like police officers were letting the, uh, Trump supporters be there without masks. I kept asking them to please tell them to wear masks, but I'm sorry, BJ, but I think you've been influenced a lot by fast news. And trust me, that's not a channel to be, to be looking at. Please, if you can, stay away from that channel. As a matter of fact, I hope they defund that channel. Once the GOP loses everything or it goes, you know, make maybe a cooking channel out of it. Because they really bring the worst on people on Latin, the worst, I mean, the worst Latinos and the worst African-Americans to the, uh, you know, to fight, um, saying that, you know, that their left is dangerous and everything. So I'm glad to be here. My name is Manny Pentato. I'm a member of the Western Mass Latin America Solidarity Coalition, also a member of the Western Mass Boricuas. I've been an activist with many groups. Proud to be a former member of the ISO and, um, a former co-chair of the Green, uh, Green Rainbow Party. But right now I need to tell you what I did after, after what happened in that, in the Trump demonstration where I went straight to, and I spoke to Chief Casper. George Casper, you know, we go back, we have spoken a lot many times. And I brought this community policy and new ideas. And this is what I said to her, you know, I said, um, when they feel, we call the police when we feel threatened, whether physically or materialistic. What I mean is that when someone that you know is causing you harm, yes, because you want to feel secure or prevent you from harm. Domestic disputes, it is harmless and no violence is involved, don't need to involve law enforcement. It's dead. And this goes something that somebody mentioned a couple of times. And also it was, um, I would love to, uh, share this, um, it was a, um, uh, podcast in which, um, there was, uh, two members from the, one was from North Carolina and the other one was from Chicago. And they said that they have a community. They communicate, create a community line in which we can meet once a month. And yes, um, uh, I, I agree with you, including a police officer and go over an agenda that is beneficial for everyone. So this is what I told Chip Casper. I don't believe in the funding the police. I believe that we need to allocate funding, especially to the community that relies on safe passage in case, uh, you know, like somebody was talking about problems, you know, with mental. We have, um, children know that they can reach Curly Dickinson Hospital, the crisis line, and there's the hotline number. Now, there's a lot of times that people will call just because of noise, music, that also can be dealt by the community line. But what we need is, we need people in the community. And I'm sorry that I was not aware of this, um, committee, but I would love to be part of this committee, maybe be there with the committee, maybe talk to you because I have some great ideas about, you know, what the police does and how we can really talk to, um, you know, police officers. Because I have cases in which me and my wife, we have an argument and the police have been called. And next thing I know, I'm on probation, only because we actually. So, yeah, these are the things that if, if there's a discussion, a family, and it's not so violent, we can call the community line. The community line would bring, oh, you know, come talk to somebody. And it doesn't have to go, um, you know, um, all the way to the court. And the last thing I want to say is, um, you know, when people will talk about defunding the police and everything, I thought that maybe there will be three important things that we can talk about the police. The first one is that every police officer, past and present, who have, you know, shot or killed an African-American, Latino, or, or the minority, be held accountable. Make them retire without due benefits and pass away. Second, you don't need to dismantle the police, but all, the police unions is different. And the most important thing is you need to, um, uh, flag, uh, flag policemen. In other words, make police, um, when a policeman has had a, here we go, time to follow red flags in the police department. If you report some officer abusing his authority.
Manny?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm sorry. Can you just finish that sentence?
Yes, until the full investigation has been done, it will cause funding and make sure they never get hired. I mean, we can work with the police, but like I say, it's gonna take a lot of us to work.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. The next person is Ry Buckley.
Hello, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, I want to start by saying I really appreciate all the work, um, the commissioners are putting in. I've seen the meeting calendar. I've been to a couple of your meetings and I'm exhausted right now. So I can't imagine how much work you're putting in and I really appreciate it. Because I think you all have the opportunity to do something really amazing and unprecedented for our community and for the public safety of our community, which is to make wide sweeping changes to our police department, radically defund the police and create peer-led initiatives that can actually keep our community safe. I want to comment quickly on a point someone made about how police, um, how their pay is determined. Um, and I want to just briefly mention the role police unions play in this process. Um, if anyone would like to know more about that, there's a great podcast called The Untold Story of Policing. Um, basically, police unions are able to leverage, um, their sort of power and their strength, which has been referenced by a lot of folks, that they have a lot of power. They're able to leverage that to negotiate, you know, and have a lot of power over their own wage negotiations. Next, um, people have said so many, uh, great things about all of the reasons we need to defund and abolish the police. Um, so I'm just gonna target, uh, one small part of policing, which is traffic policing. Um, I'm gonna share a personal story, um, from my dad. This did not take place in North Hampton, but it was a very small community, uh, not that different than North Hampton. Um, this was around two thousand eight, um, when, uh, you know, economy was in really bad shape. Um, and my dad was unemployed. Um, he was working a bunch of strange, unusual jobs, not strange, unusual jobs. He was, you know, being a farmhand, he was, you know, being a mechanic, he was fixing things. Um, and so he was out late a lot. He'd be coming home ten, eleven PM, you know, tired from a job. And he was getting pulled over all the time. Um, my dad is a white man, you know, had a lot of protection from creeds with his identity. Um, he was driving a really beat up car and he was working weird hours. He was struggling, um, he was living on the grandmother at that point. And he was, you know, trying to get back on feet. He has now, uh, which is great. But the policeman was very difficult for him. Um, he was getting pulled over all the time, you know, were you wearing a seatbelt or mufflers off and loud? It's very late, you know, people are sleeping in this town. Um, and he was never ticketed. Um, he was just harassed. Um, he was forced to spend, you know, the little amount of money he was able to make, you know, trying to replace his muffler so he wouldn't get pulled over so much. Or trying to, you know, fix his car or all these things that he thought would help, but they didn't help. The police just kept harassing him, um, you know, stressing him out. He was having trouble sleeping. Um, this was a really, you know, tangible, difficult thing for him. And it made it really hard for him to get back on his feet. Um, it was clearly, you know, he was struggling and the police were preventing him from, you know, improving his situation. They were making it harder for him. They were oppressing him. And again, this is, you know, a white man, um, who has it so much better than so many people in, you know, our communities and in our country. Um, I think this really shows why policing and particularly, you know, I'm gonna talk about traffic policing because there'd be so many great things. We don't need traffic police with guns and vests stopping people for things that, you know, aren't legal. He was never ticketed because he wasn't breaking any laws. They were just harassing him, frightening him, um, and also traffic tickets. We don't need armed paramilitary, you know, giving people tickets because they forgot to, you know, put quarters in their meter. Um, I think these are really specific parts of policing that I urge this commission, um, to address and abolish and diminish, um, folks so that people in this, our community in North Hampton don't have to experience, um, what my dad did and so we can be a model for communities all over America and New England, um, to follow in our footsteps and protect so many people. Um, once more, thank you so much for your time, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick is the next person.
Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me. Um, hi, I'm Patrick. I'm from Ward One. Uh, I guess I'm just gonna go right into it. Um, what compels me here tonight is, in its current form, is there's a lot of reasons why I don't feel safe in North Hampton. Um, and typically, they're not the same, they're not those same reasons that, um, others do. Um, well, that's not true, but anyway, sorry, I'm railing myself. Um, I don't feel safe around police officers. I don't feel that any amount of police, more police, will make me feel more safe in North Hampton. I say this as a queer, white man. Um, part of this stems from a knowledge of my own community history. Um, part of it comes from looking at my partner. And I'm gonna be a little bit sappy and I apologize. Um, but I often do find myself looking to my partner, uh, for strength. Um, my partner happens to be black. I care for him deeply. I cherish him. He means the world to me. My biggest fear in this town, in this community, is that my partner will become a law enforcement statistic. That I could lose someone who I cherish simply because of his skin. And in America today, it is because of his skin that he might become a magnet for bullets. I'm speaking here tonight regarding something that I think is important. As I understand, this commission was charged with creating a roadmap to implement alternatives to policing and defining that plan for the city going forward. My concern is that over many weeks of watching this process, a concern about this concept of how does it affect? How does, how does this work? How does it work? And that's a valid thing. But the thing that I want to caution against is structuring a new system, creating a roadmap for how we are moving forward based on a system that historically has precedent and, like, evidence to be not the greatest and systemically racist. This is not, and let me be clear, about those who work for the system. Because you can have bad people, you can have good people. But when the system itself is working as intended, but disenfranchising populations, both my own community, being queer, my fellows, um, minority communities, black, brown, indigenous, unhoused women, I don't want to see this commission present something that we already have and that we have evidence is flawed in the way it's constructed, in the way it's intended to operate. So I ask, please be creative, please be effective, and please make big asks to help make our community safer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Beau C.
Hi, my name is Beau Clark. I live in Hadley currently, but I was born and raised and grew up in North Hampton and I work in North Hampton, spend my time there. Um, I wanted to just thank the commissioners that are taking your time to do this and the admins and the interpreters. I really appreciate your experience and, um, willingness to like help your community out with this issue. Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit, people have already talked about it, but kind of, to the experience that, um, unhoused folks are having with police harassment in North Hampton. Um, I also do want to just, while there's a lot of people on this call, remind people that, um, right now there's still no public water in North Hampton. Um, it got shut off a few weeks ago for the winter without any infrastructure in place to provide that for people. Um, so people who are unhoused, the only way that they're able to use, uh, to get water during a global pandemic to like wash your hands or just to drink, uh, they're reliant upon businesses, um, to let them in. Um, and during the pandemic, that's been really hard to come by. Uh, folks are really struggling to be able to wash their hands during a pandemic. Um, and, you know, businesses can use their own destruction, that's who they want to let in, especially now. So, um, I guess I just like want to highlight some of the like really, really large gaps of infrastructure we have and like places that this money, um, this reallocation of funds could go. Um, one thing that has been asked for is just a public restroom or a public sanitation area. I heard Lois mentioned it when you were talking about, um, when you were giving your descriptions of what you've been doing. So I really, uh, would love to see, uh, this commission commit to making recommendations kind of like that because I, I can't, I can't believe that nine months into a pandemic, the lack of solutions for the unhoused community is just, it's like the warming centers opening at the end of the week, but there were days in the last month, um, where it was like fifteen degrees at night. And it's, it's a pandemic. And I, I can't believe this, these things haven't been figured out already, nine months in. Um, and so it's really hard to survive as an unhoused person in North Hampton. And we have a really large population of unhoused community members. Um, and they're often harassed by the police. Um, as Tay said before, uh, the North Hampton Police Department will sweep camps, bring them into, um, into shelters, which are, you know, like really connected to social services and a lot of carceral approaches. Um, tents have been slashed, um, and people Tents have been slashed and people are trespassed from both private, which might not be like under the purview, but from public property. And that's a way that, you know, we've talked to about there like being anti camping ordinances. And I just wanted to highlight that it's not just like, there's not a rule that you can't camp in Northampton. But there's a lot of specifications on like times you can be in public areas. So those are often used whenever police want to clear unhoused people that are living in certain areas out of these areas, they will trespass them. So, and that, that comes with a fine. People have to go to court. This is still happening in a pandemic. Like this is what we're spending our time doing, is just further policing unhoused folks. And I think, I was looking at the mayor's panhandling study work group, which was released in, but this is a statistic, this is like a proud statistic in there in 2019. It was Northampton Police Department reported 374 service calls on Main Street, which resulted in 48 arrests. And these calls are trespassing, unwanted guests, disturbance, medical emergency, shoplifting, theft, drunkenness, medical, mental health. And of the 48 arrests during this period, forty, 44% of the arrestees reported the streets of Northampton as their address. And 3.1% of arrestees reported either the Center Street Interfaith Shelter or the Grove Street Shelter as their address. And this, you know, this was last year. So it's the amount of time that we are spending like harassing unhoused community members for simply just surviving is, it's just out of control. I don't see it changing. And I would love to see, you know, folks, unhoused folks consulted going forward on these things. Northampton does this thing a lot where it comes up with these solutions without including anyone that is affected by these things. It's seen most hap, most recently with opening a warming center. So I really encourage you all to act, to work and do outreach to get those perspectives. I think if you want unhoused people like to participate, I think it should be paid. We should figure out a way to pay them for their time and their expertise. I don't think this is a setting where people would feel safe coming. I mean, there's multiple police officers around here. Like people don't. It's inaccessible for a host of reasons, which it sounds like y'all are really aware of, and I thank you for that. And then, yeah, really pushing, I loved what Sean shared about peer support and what that really means. Not just, you know, like, social work is a position where it is not, you're not on equal footing. There is there's someone who has power and authority over you and it's not autonomous, it's not led by these people. So I would really just like really recommend that the recommendations you make are really based in peer support and not overpowering and that are based in self-determination.
Thank you, Beau. Thanks. The next person is Hannah Begley. Hannah?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. I just want to thank the committee for your time. Yeah, so I know we're going on around three hours now, so I'll try to keep it entertaining. I really want to thank the people that spoke before, RJ, Emily, Danielle, Jose, Noah, Mark, and Lilith was someone that made me cry because something that really strikes a chord with me is thinking about the world that our children are going to inherit and what world we're leaving behind. And like Danielle said, really dreaming big, imagining boldly, because like the quote says, you don't want to build something that you're going to have to tear down tomorrow. So that's just something that comes to mind. I, yeah, so I guess I'll share a little bit of some personal experience. Just a rhetorical question I was hoping to ask people and you guys just kind of sit with the feelings that it brings. But when you're driving your car and you're not doing anything illegal and you see a police officer, how do you feel? Do you feel protected? Because I know for me, my heart sinks and even if I'm not speeding, I slow down. And this is someone who's white, who has white privilege. And I benefit from the way that society sees young women and I'm still terrified. So you can only imagine how someone in a different position, that would be 10 times as much. I don't think that's the feeling that we should be getting from someone whose slogan is serve and protect, because it feels like more. Their slogan is terrorize and intimidate. I, so that's, that's just something that also gets me a little heated. My personal experience with the East Hampton Police Department is my first time renting, I didn't have any support from my parents. I signed a lease without getting a copy. I had to move out within a week of moving there because it was a really bad situation. And I'm still in court for that two years later. But anyways, the only people I could go to were the police station. And I still remember how they sent this woman out. She was in full gear. And she had the mentality of us versus them, which is how police officers are trained. And she stood there, I still remember her body position, she had one foot forward and she had her arms crossed and she was listening, but just no empathy. And that's not what I needed in this situation. I'm diagnosed with PTSD. And I, for 48 hours after what happened with my former living situation, I wasn't in my body at all. And, and the only thing that brought me to my body was hanging out with people in the community that I could talk to. And that would like have a little bit of sympathy for me. And I was at the Lord of Indian East Hampton and it was like kind of landing back on earth. So the fact that the police station was the only place I could go to, and they made me feel so much worse. Because when they're in that blue suit, they just embody authority and authority that abuses their power. It's just kind of like, for someone who has experienced authority abusing their power, it's just such a cruel reminder. Yeah, so that's what I had to say. And also something that I had to say, the first Black Lives Matter protest I went to this year was in Springfield. I went with my black friend, Tayja. And I remember after everyone was so tired from walking and we had to catch a ride to our car. So her dad picked us up and she was in the front seat with her father. And there was four people in the backseat, so I was sitting on my friend's lap. And, and I remember everyone was talking in the backseat. And I overheard what Tayja and her father were saying. Tayja's mother did not want her to go to the protest, even though she's 22. And, and she was saying, Tayja, I know why you felt the need to do this, but we've been in the streets for 60 years and we didn't want to see you be killed. And so like that's something that will always stick with me because I will not rest until there's not a chance of seeing a friend of mine being murdered by a police officer and then no justice being served. As you can see, my chat is coming here for some emotional support. But that's just something I'll never forget. You can just, it was such an intimate conversation. And I felt so privileged that I was able to hear it. But it's just so sad and so real. And it's just like, is this really the world that we want to live behind? After so many years of evolving, is this really like the blueprint of how good we can be? So I would just really urge you to think outside of the current system of what's built on capitalism and white supremacy and how these people just evolved from slave traders. Like I, I beg of you to please just think boldly, think about the world you want to live in. I know that's not an exercise that we normally do, but yeah. Thank you so much.
I'm passing off to Dan.
All right. And so the next person is Larkin.
Yeah, thank you all for being here. I know this has been a really long meeting. Mainly, I would like to start by just echoing and boosting up the things that many other people have said, including Tay and Sean and Jose and Emily. We really, we must abolish and defund the police right now. I'm really tired of hearing white people describe the time that police were helpful to them or the ways that they feel that they're protected. Any oppressive system comes with benefits for some. That's why a system stays in place. It is positive when looked at by the people in power. We cannot give individual good or helpful experiences with police more weight than the consistently bad experiences of those the system was set up to harm. And if you don't know a lot about what I mean by set up to harm, I would encourage you to look into the history of policing and the history of policing in the United States particularly. Not listening to those being oppressed by policing is racist, classist, immoral, and impractical. I mean impractical in terms of getting to the root of the issue. In terms of, impractical when the goal is systems that everyone can survive under. Impractical in striving for liberation for all. If you can't listen to the calls from our black, brown, and unhoused community members to dismantle the Northampton Police Department, then you are willfully choosing your own comfort or hurt over the safety of the whole. That's all I have to say. I hope we can wrap this meeting up without too much longer. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you very much. The next person is Robert.
Hi, I'm Robert. I was born and raised in Northampton. I live in Ward Three. And I had prepared something, but I actually just wanted to share with you all that I am in a group text message right now with my family and my sister, without giving too many details, is involved in a domestic dispute right now. And my family is discussing whether they should call the police or not. They don't want to, but they really have no other option, it seems like. So I just wanted to share that quickly. And then I wanted to respond to some, to something that Cynthia said about having faith in this commission. And I have to say, I'm having a really hard time sometimes with that. Particularly tonight, after hearing Nick Fleischer give a report on his subcommittee preemptively saying that any recommendations coming out of that subcommittee would involve police. That's a quote. And I just don't understand how, you know, we can put, how we can expect anyone to share their experiences with the police when the committee, the commission that you have all designed the structure of is just such an unsafe space for those people to show up to. And sorry, my thoughts are a little scattered right now. So something else I wanted to share is that in the past, I volunteered for the Mass Bail Fund and have done a handful of bailouts in jails in Western Massachusetts, primarily in Ludlow. And when you do bail out, you really have to be prepared for anything. I've had bail commissioners scream at me because they've been pulled away from a golf game on a Saturday morning. People straight, you know, the corrections officers tell lie after lie. They intimidate you. You know, just because they have personal, whatever it is, against specific people in jail. And one of the first times I went, I bailed out someone who had been in prison for, I sat with his family. He had been in prison for months for a drug charge that he cannot afford the bail for, which is a few thousand dollars. And it had taken his family a few months to gather that money and I was there to help them. And so he was released. It took a very long time, but what was so moving or like hard for me to experience in that moment was when he was released, the people in the waiting room recognized one another as cousins. And it was just in that moment that I realized this term systemic structural racism that exists, how real that is in some communities. And this, this person lived in Springfield and you might be wondering why I'm sharing a story about something that happened in Springfield. But it's really easy to see just looking at Northampton's history and the way it was settled, the way it was developed in the context of New England, why incarceration and police abuse are so prevalent in communities immediately surrounding Northampton and why we have such a huge bifurcation of wealth and race. And so as someone who was born and grew up here, it just frustrates me so much to hear people say, Northampton is an exception. Things don't happen here. Or even earlier today, when Booker said, you know, we're not Berkeley. I don't really know what that is supposed to mean, you know? There, I know for a fact that there are black queer sex workers who reside in Northampton. I don't know if that's what you meant by that, but so I just, yeah, I just want to contextualize a little bit, you know, we're not.
So that's your time, Robert. Can you finish your? Can you finish your thought? Or are you all set?
I am all set. I'm good.
All right. So the next person is Peter Coranzas.
Hi. I did want to follow up on something I heard. Is it, so when you defunded by, I'm correct to understand you defunded by 10% this year? Is that accurate?
Well, the, the city council defunded the police.
The city council? So the committee had nothing to do with it?
No, we reformed afterwards.
Okay. I just wanted to get a better understanding of that. So my point is, is this, so change is going to happen, obviously. That's why you guys are here. I am very concerned with how the city conducts change. A great example is of what they did over the summer with the Shared Streets Project. They basically, there was a small group of people. They came up with a solution. They implemented it and it did a ton of damage because they hadn't included the proper parties. You're already doing a much better job because you're actually having an open forum where people get to speak, unlike what we experienced. Using that as an example, I'm actually curious about, so where are you, how far along are you guys in the process? In terms of submitting a report, submitting a recommendation, like what, what's the timeline for that, if you don't mind me asking?
So the city council and the mayor established that we would produce a preliminary report on December 17th. After that, we have a final report due in March before the budget. And that gets delivered to the city council and the mayor and they can decide how to act on any recommendations.
So the recommendation is like all or nothing, basically, or is there room for modification after it's been submitted? Like you just drop it off and they go with it or no?
We, we deliver the report. How they act is up to them. They can, they can do some of it. They could do none of it. They could do their own thing. We don't have any actual power. We just have the capacity to make recommendations that are well thought out to them that they can act on and they can make choices. But the mayor holds all of the executive power and the city council holds the legislative power.
Gotcha. So in making recommendations, are you also considering fallout from whatever you decide to do? Like how much time is being spent on? Okay, so I come from a background of project management. My job was to, when a solution or idea was created, they handed it to me and I broke it. And then I analyzed what happens when this thing doesn't work. And then I would make recommendations and hand it back. And that process would go back and forth until basically the damage or any negative aspects of the change was thoroughly fleshed out. And we were comfortable with any consequence that, you know, per as much as we could foresee. So is there, is that, is there anything like that in place with what you're planning to recommend?
Yeah, that, that's part of the process of developing recommendations is to understand both what we're recommending and their impact. Will we know everything? Probably not. You know, it's hard to sort of summarize the entire experience of, of a city in nine months, especially understanding all of the minutia in there. But looking at other cities, other organizations, understanding what happened in those contexts, it will help inform how we proceed in our context. But this isn't going blind. We are thinking about all of the possible impacts, all of the possible outcomes and doing our best to make sure that we minimize any damage, if there were any at all.
I'm just concerned with the, and it's not, like you said, it's not on you, it's on the city. But my main concern is when a course of action is implemented, if there's no basically troubleshooting process. Because the city has a tendency to grab something, stick with it, run with it, and then they won't back out of it unless there's an extreme pushback, even though it might not be the right fit.
So I'll also open this up if any, anyone else on the commission wants to respond as well. But our entire purpose is to make sure that we're making well thought out recommendations that are feasible, that have, that there are processes to make. um, that are feasible, that have, that there are processes to make, um, make those things happen. That there's controls, that we're looking at all of the things that we can to understand all of the problems that exist and even the ones that might not exist, but that are functions of the police department that maybe don't belong there. And so understanding all of these things, ultimately our recommendations again, go to the council and go to the mayor. So like what we recommend, they might do something completely different. Um, and they have that power and that's, that's their prerogative as well. Hopefully it'll be informed by what we, what we produce here. Uh, we are working for about a year, um, to make sure that, that we can recommend the right or the best courses of action. But I would also recommend, you know, continuing to go to city council meetings and to reach out to the mayor as well, um, to make sure that they're also thinking about these things. But, um, I can say pretty, pretty confidently that everyone is thinking about what the potential fallout or what the problems might be, um, with anything that we might recommend.
So will you also, and I'm just, I'm not, so will you also be recommending like a contingency of, for certain things or no?
I mean, we don't have a report yet, so I can't tell you.
No, I, I mean, I mean, like, is that part of what you're conceptually going to be doing? So like, we're going to recommend this, but then here's contingency if that blows out, essentially.
We don't have, like, that's, that's a question for, you know, a month from now. Like, we don't have that to, to sort of say what we're doing. Um, what the report would be, what the recommendations would be, whether it's one recommendation, whether it's three recommendations, whether it's a whole series of different paths. There's a lot of different routes that we can go. And we are, we are still learning about, um, all of these things as we're going.
Yeah, I know, so I'm not, I'm like, so is it, is it something that you're planning on having in your recommendation as in a situation where it doesn't work? Are you guys planning on including anything? High level, I'm not saying you have the specifics right now, obviously, but I'm just saying like, are you planning on having contingency built into whatever you're going to put forward?
I'm going, all right, Lois? Lois, can you?
I think we're going to have a series of recommendations. And then it's going to be up to the mayor, it's going to be up to the city council, it's going to be up to so many people that are involved in this. I don't know if you've been, uh, for this whole evening, but there've been many other evenings like it. People that want to see, uh, change happen. And it's going to be up to people, not just us, af- after we make the recommendations. Me, it's going to be up to the people who are the residents of Northampton to advocate with the city and with the mayor for what they want to see happen to the, you know, which recommendations they want to see realized. And, you know, we can be part of that, having gone through this experience. But once the, can the commission comes to an end, it's not an ongoing commission. We make the, we make a final report and we submit that report. And then it's going to be up to not just people that are elected, but all of the people that aren't elected that live here, who advocate for what they think ought to be happening with those recommendations. And that's, you know, I mean, I don't think we can say anything more than that right now just because, uh, this is our first public hearing. The first report is a few, a couple of weeks, and then we have until mid-March. So in an odd way, even though we've been meeting, we're still at the place for all of us. I think all the different committees gathering information and trying to synthesize that information and figure out what the recommendations are going to be and what the plans we're going to propose are. At least that's my thinking. So I think, I mean, I understand your concern, but I don't think we can address your concerns right now. Um, just because we're not there yet. And it's a lot of what's going to happen really isn't, isn't what we're, what we've been asked to do. It's not what we've been asked to do. What we've been asked to do is to try to learn as much as we can and use our experience and come up with the best recommendations that we can all agree on. And so, um, you know, that's where we're at right now.
And that's actually the time for, uh, commenting back and forth. Thank you very much.
Can I add just one more thing, please?
Uh, no, we're, we're at time. Uh, you can always email, um, the commission and we can make that, distribute that email out to the rest of it. Um, we also have, um, upcoming meetings and you're more than welcome to join and make, um, comments in those as well. The next person on the list is, um, Kala.
Kala. Hi, I'm Kala, I use sheer pronouns. I'm sixteen. Um, I just want to echo firstly, thank you all for your time. Thank you so much for the work you're putting into this. Secondly, I want to echo some things people have said. I want to echo what Tay, Sean, Jose, Emily, and so many others have said about the fact we need to defund and abolish the Northampton Police Department, um, and work towards building peer-led safety programs and community-led safety in Northampton. Um, one thing that has been brought up multiple times on this call that I wasn't quite expecting to get so much support is the topic of student, um, and school resource officers. And, um, I'd just like to say that school resource officers fuel the dehumanization of children of color. It suggests that children need to be constantly surveilled in school and assumes criminality. Research does not show definitively that SROs are effective at improving school safety. And there's no data that proves that SROs prevent school shootings. In fact, they actually do boost the school-to-prison pipeline and make it more likely for Black and Brown students to be targeted by the legal system earlier and more often. They tend to target Black youth, LGBTQ plus youth, disabled youth more, and make them feel unsafe in school. And I did not have very much time to do this, but I did reach out to NHS students of color during the time we've been in this meeting, and I got some direct quotes from them. From a Black male student, the, from when there was an SRO in the school, "He followed me to the water fountain with his police dog." Another student said, "He exacerbated tension between students, especially non-white students, and the administration." Another student said, "He didn't provide perfection, protection." "He didn't provide protection and was called to intimidate kids." A Black fifteen-year-old woman of color said, "I do not want to be going to a school every day where there is an SRO. I don't feel safe." I just want to say that what has been said on this call previously does not reflect the actual experiences of students at NHS and their opinions on a student resource officer. And there should not be one in schools. And I just want to lastly say that, uh, I need you guys to like, guide the city on a path towards meaningfully uprooting the systems of oppression, including this policing system that is blatantly racist, anti-LGBTQ, classist, so many things. Um, and I need you guys to lead us on a path of defunding the police, investing in our community, not listening to entrenched city leaders who lack imagination and got us here in the first place. Um, that's all. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Um, the next person is Ace Taylor.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time and your patience. I would like to second the calls to, uh, defund the police and to move the jobs they're doing that do not need to be done by people with thousands of hours of gun training and violence training to places that, and people that don't have that, uh, bias towards violence. If you give someone a hammer, they're going to try and solve every problem with them. Overwhelmingly, the training that is given to police officers is training in violence. They are going to attempt to solve problems violently, aggressively. This is exacerbated by the training that all police officers go through that has been said before, puts them against the world. It says the rest of the world is either a criminal deserving of violence or a civilian who doesn't understand what you do, does not trust you and does not like you and can't tell the difference between a policeman and a criminal. This training is bad and harmful towards, for everyone. It harms police officers by dividing them off from the worlds and it harms the rest of us because that training doesn't effectively solve social problems. It doesn't solve problems of crime, it doesn't solve problems of homelessness. There are times and places when violence are appropriate, but it's much less frequent than gets used by police. To that end, I'd like to make the recommendation of ending qualified immunity for all Northampton police officers as well as all police officers or law enforcement officers operating within the bounds of the city. Today, the policing reform bill was passed in the state of Massachusetts, which sadly left off qua- ending qualified immunity for police officers. For those unaware, this qualified immunity basically means that if a police officer, uh, harmed someone, killed someone, they are not liable for that harm. This is a unique position. If someone dies under a doctor's care, that doctor is liable. If a student dies under a teacher's care, that teacher is liable. If someone drinks too much at a bar and dies, the bartender is liable. Police officers are the only group that have this immunity. And police officers are also the group that are trained in violence and aggression. And to the at least three Northampton police officers that are on this call, I'm sorry that this happened to you. I'm sorry that you've been pitted against the world and told that everyone is against you and that you have to react in violence. But we can't bear the brunt of that aggression. To the idea that this doesn't happen in Northampton, all of the training for the police officers in Western Massachusetts happens in one location. Police officers cross-pollinate, they cross city lines, they move cities, they move states, they get trained nationally. Saying something is only a problem somewhere else ignores the reality that policing is not just here. Northampton police do not just stay in Northampton. That's not the way this works. Again, thank you all for staying up so late and working hard for this. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Um, the next person, um, on the list is actually Brian Ziyat.
Thanks, Daniel. Um, I'll be, uh, you can hear me? Cool, um, yeah, I'll be quick. Um, I was just, uh, wondering if, um, your discussions have, um, brought up the issue of disarming the police. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure who that would be directed to, but, um, yeah, I was just wondering if that's come up.
Are there any commissioners that would like to speak to that? All right, unmute Booker? And then Carol?
Am I unmuted? Yes, so, um, we have not yet discussed, um, disarming alternatives. There are, uh, models in Philadelphia and, um, other areas of having, for instance, traffic officers in specific areas not having, carrying firearms. There are discussions about having school-related police who are not carrying weapons. There are options of, should there be ambassadors, for instance, in downtown Northampton, who are there to keep the, um, uh, to facilitate safety without using weapons and doing that. Now, we have not gotten to direct discussions about those issues. But I and other members of our committee are aware that there are experiments with, using, um, non-weaponed, uh, security. It's really hard to find words that describe this, um, because everything is sort of ironic in its own way. We have not done specific discussions yet. We're still really focused on the, within the Alternatives Policing Group with mental health, homelessness, um, and other sort of social determinants of care that are influencing policing.
Thank you, Booker. And then Carol, I saw you had your hand up as well.
Yes, I think obliquely, our subcommittee has looked at that not specifically what, what it would be, what it would take to create like a bunch of bobbies to walk, you know, to do community policing without any weapons. We haven't gotten that direct, although I think raising the questions, which we take very, very seriously about the creation of models that would move part of the police budget over into social services, crisis response, housing, et cetera. It, it's very, it's the essence of what we talk about, what we study. And I think there's an implicit, um, notion in there about reinvesting what has been disinvested for the last thirty years in this country. Social services, human services have systematically been reduced and/or turned over to corporate entities to run. And police have by default, uh, picked up some of those, um, community tasks. And, um, so I think that the gun or no gun issue is in there. Uh, because if our recommendations end up being that we are going to, um, ask the city to consider, um, taking portions of police budget and reinvesting in crisis work, housing, uh, substance abuse, respite, uh, expanding respite beds, et cetera. Um, we're basically saying we're, we want the creation of a workforce because it won't be volunteers that will run these services. Might be people, peers involved, but they would be paid. And implicitly, they will not have guns or, or weapons.
All right, thank you. The next person up is Alex D.
Thank you. My name is Alex Deschamps. I am so grateful for the work of the commission and the amount of time that you have put into this work. It's well past my bedtime and, uh, so I will try to keep this brief. Firstly, I firmly believe that police do not belong in our places of worship. I could not and would not feel safe having police at my shul. Um, I would also like to echo Larkin's statements and Kala's statements specifically. The systems and structures of policing are meant to benefit white people. They're meant to have positive experiences so they continue to give power and influence to the police. With respect to school resource officers, I would ask that individuals look at the data and research regarding SROs and the school-to-prison pipeline. Um, as Kala mentioned, the experiences of white students and the experiences of students of color and of lower socioeconomic status are vastly different. Um, if you are looking for data specifically, the work of Emily Owens from the Department of Criminology at UPenn is truly excellent. More resources put towards counselors and community builders in schools would provide the same avenues for aid that white students routinely benefit from with school resource officers. I ask that the commission not make any recommendations that give any resources or authority to the police, period. Northampton deserves a brighter future where the community truly cares for its members. Northampton could be a true beacon in New England, not for some vague, unsubstantiated declaration that our police department is the most progressive around, but for actually implementing systems that actively support, uplift, and protect the people of the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next person is Sid Friedman, I think, or S. Friedman?
Hi, um, my name's Madden, I live in Ward One. This is maybe small potatoes compared to a lot of the larger structural thoughts about the police. But, um, so I live on like an eight-house dead-end street. And they were doing work with National Grid or Columbia Gas earlier this summer. And, um, there were six cops on the street, uh, none of them wearing masks, which is a separate issue. But I- But I was under the impression that that type of like extraneous labor, where like nobody could have walked down the street and thought that those people needed to be there. Um, they were just kind of walking up and down the dead-end street. Um, I wonder if there is going to be like scrutiny into that. I'm under the impression that it's because of the unions in a lot of cases, and if there is a way that we can encourage the union to renegotiate or at least get some data or shed some light on why there's such a large police presence on small construction projects and why, where that money is coming from, where it's going, and maybe siphon some of it out. I don't know if that's a clear question, but.
Um, sorry, I want to be clear. So the question that you're asking is, are we looking at the sort of like detail work and where that's required? And how to sort of change some of that structure? There you go.
Now I'm unmuted. Um, yeah, and like, what barriers might be in place for preventing that or why there is so much of that? Um, yeah, essentially.
Right. And, um, Michael, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I'm, we, this, um, are, can you hear me?
Uh, you're still crackling up there.
Yeah.
Okay, how's that? We did look at the, uh, we did look at the, um, detail jobs. And basically, those are not funded by the city specifically. Uh, it's, uh, funded around the company that, you know, that is doing the work, whether it's roadwork, or you'll notice that there's often three officers outside of NEDA. Um, you know, and that's the company that's doing that work or, or, you know, engaging for that, uh, patrol, uh, privately with the city. And the, the department doesn't make a profit on it. The city actually makes a profit on it. Um, and that's part of, I think it's part of the collective bargaining with the police union that they are assigned to that work. Um, you know, there is, has been in place a law since two thousand and eight in Massachusetts that allows for non-police to do road jobs and detail work like that. But right now, the police union has been able to hang on to that work. So, uh, you know, at this point, that's, you know, again, it's not necessarily tax dollars that are paying for that. Um, it is in the case of the, of the transfer station, but, uh, like on your street for the construction, the, the construction company had to pay for that.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then the last person, uh, is Yaiping Douglas.
Hi, um, hi, my name is Yaiping. I, um, grew up in Greenfield, and I currently live in Turner's Falls, but I come to Northampton a lot, um, as do a lot of my friends. And so I care about Northampton a lot. Um, thank you all so much for being here so late. Um, I probably predictably agree with what a lot of people have already said, but, um, I'm gonna just give like a sort of random scattering of things to throw in the mix. Um, so there were a couple, or there were a few articles put out over the summer, I think especially in response to the uprisings about commissions and reports. Um, one was in The New Yorker. It was published June fifteenth. It was called "The History of the Riot Report: How Government Commissions Became Alibis for Inaction." I'm just gonna read like a quick quote from it. So during the Kerner Report hearings in nineteen sixty-eight, and now this is a quote from the article, um, "Maybe the most painful testimony came from Kenneth B. Clark, the African-American psychologist at the City College of New York, whose research on inequality had been pivotal, pivotal to the Supreme Court's decision in Brown versus Board of Education. He told the commission, 'I read that report of the nineteen nineteen riot in Chicago, and it is as if I were reading the report of the Investigating Committee on the Harlem Riot of Thirty-Five, the report of the Investigating Committee on the Harlot Riot, Harlem Riot of Forty-Three, the report of the Mccone Commission on the Watts Riot. I must again in candor say to you, members of this commission, it is a kind of Alice in Wonderland with the same moving picture reshown over and over again, the same analysis, the same recommendations, and the same inaction.'" Um, and there was another article from the summer called "Racism Won't Be Solved by Yet Another Blue Ribbon Report: Elected Officials Instinctively Turn to Studying Problems Rather Than Solving Them." That's in The Atlantic from June fourth this summer. Um, and a quick quote from that, "The current demonstrations against police brutality will end. They always do. When the crowds go home, politicians will resume their defensive crouch. They will call for reform, never again, and form commissions. Some of these commissions may even be blue ribbon. These commissions will issue reports, and the politicians will claim to have done something, but another commission won't tell us anything we don't already know." Um, I highly recommend both of those articles. They're really interesting. They really go into detail of like the long history of reports and like that these reports, like the Kerner Commission report, like identified police as like one of the main barriers for racial equality. Um, but anyway, I, I read these to say, I think a lot of us have been asking this commission to please not study what we already know. Um, and I think it seems like the Alternatives Committee especially is like doing a lot of really amazing work and looking into alternatives and the path forward, which is like a beautiful world that we all want, where we take care of each other and we like invest in things that we know help and invest in, you know, ways of approaching each other, um, as equals instead of power over, like Sean was talking about. Um, but I did hear Nick in the beginning of the meeting describe the work of that subcommittee, and I found it very disturbing, and I think that, um, so another commission won't tell us anything we don't already know. I guess my, my question for Nick and that subcommittee is like, what are you using as guideposts to, um, inform your research? Because some of the phrases I heard you use, like, you're seeing how, um, the police's approach can be more effective when responding to people with mental health problems and saying that you're looking into trainings. Um, I guess I'm wondering like, how many, how much time you've spent looking into the many, many articles that exist that cite studies that show that police training doesn't work and better police training doesn't work. Um, like, I can't actually cite the statistics for you right now. I can follow up with an email later with these articles, but there's no shortage of these articles and this proof. And then all of this, um, like, evidence that's, uh, that's out there, if you just Google "why reforms don't work," that again are based on studies in combination with people's lived experience. I guess I don't see how your committee could come to the conclusion that, that you need to look into better training when so many other people, um, activists and scholars over past decades have actually talked a lot about this and written about this. And so I think it's sort of, it, it says something funny to me that your committee would go down this route when it's, I just wonder what, what's in foot, like, is it just your opinion? Are you just using your own, you know, thoughts on what will work? Um.
Well, that was the time, um, but you did have a question, so went over to the committee to answer. It looks like Elizabeth has already raised their hand.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Can you hear me? Oh, great. Um, yeah, no, I, I just wanted to respond quick because there's been a couple of comments about that particular committee. And again, would want to encourage people to, um, to attend and to, and to also, uh, be able to share their thoughts during those, um, subcommittees as well. Uh, but certainly, we haven't reached any conclusions. So I think the, the piece around, that there's been a conclusion that's been reached around, uh, police involvement or how they practice or training. All of that is deeply disputed amongst the, uh, com- uh, committee, subcommittee members. And is, um, and when I say that we are taking a rigorous, uh, deep dive into all of the information that's out there and, uh, and, and interrogating it, um, against, uh, the, the known research that many people have quoted already, um, you know, that is absolutely what's happening. Uh, and I know for, for me, and I, I know I've heard from other, uh, subcommittee members as well, it's not so much to say, can we learn something new that we don't already know? It's more about, uh, the legitimacy of the process. It's just as important as our conclusions that we, uh, that we come up with. So we are doing our due diligence, um, in, in some of these investigations, but I think, and ha- doing our due diligence to explore the different perspectives that are out there. Um, and, uh, and also, I think, um, you know, I think with every stroke, really seeing that, um, you know, a lot of the things that people have already mentioned are, um, becoming really apparent. So, uh, yeah, so I hope that that's helpful to understand that we're not, I know that, I know those phrasings were problematic, but I think that, uh, not all of our, not all the subcommittee, subcommittee members feel the same way.
All right. And then, uh, Nick, I see you.
Yaiping, I, I just want to, uh, clarify. We're, we're trying to learn what, what exists and what, what is happening. And I also want to just differentiate, um, something that might, might be of interest. Um, the, the education around anti-bias, uh, uh, training, uh, it, the, the information about that, I believe, um, it's a number of people, I'm not personally familiar with it, but a number of people have said that, that there's no record of it being effective and, um, and, uh, and that, that seems to be widely known. Um, but the, there are other areas such as mental, uh, interacting with, uh, mental health situations where, um, it's not as clear that the training is not, um, uh, effective. And in fact, um, uh, we want to find out what, what efforts are being made in that area. Um, because that's a, a significant portion of, uh, uh, of what the police are asked to respond to. Um, I, I also want to just say, I'm, um, hearing the feedback and the concerns that people have said tonight. We will be talking about it, uh, in our, in our committee meeting. But I thank you, uh, for your feedback.
And then, um, Namdi as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also a member of the subcommittee. Just want to add in on this that, um, the, um, knowledge that we may have accumulated about what has, what's generally true about policing in the country, still needs to be checked in relation to the special case of Northampton. And I'm, you know, my day job, I work as an academic. I'm pretty familiar with research. I edit one of the most, um, high-impact behavioral science journals in America. And, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at reviews of, of evidence and trying to apply that evidence to specific cases is not straightforward. So, um, what our commission's trying to do is make sure that we, you know, do our due diligence and check to see how the Northampton situation matches, um, what we think we know from the national situation. That's all I'm saying.
Do I have time to say one more thing?
Yeah, you have one minute.
Okay, um, thanks for the responses. Um, I guess I just want to say that like, even though I can't cite specifics right now, I think, um, just that it makes sense to sort of defer to people who have been thinking about this for decades. And there are abolitionist scholars and organizers that have written a lot about this. So I'm wondering whether the committee has been referring to, for instance, there's a chart that I think was developed by Critical Resistance and Miriam Kaba that shows like, what are reforms that actually get us on a path that we want to get on? And what are reforms that actually make the police more powerful? And it, you know, there's like blue or green and red on it. And I'm, to me, like, that should be a sort of reference because it's been used by so many organizers and activists who have been doing this like, longer than most of when I've been alive. And that also looking to activists around the country and what they're demanding, like, as far as I know, the places that have gotten police cuts, the organizing groups have asked for training to be cut first. And that's true in Seattle and Austin where there is an eighteen percent cut and a thirty percent cut. And so to just take the lead from other activists around the country as well. Thanks.
Um, thank you. So that was the ten minutes, um, for the commentary. Um, and that was our last comment, um, which means we are ready to wrap up this meeting. I do want to thank everyone who has come. We started out with around, I think it was a hundred and thirty or so people, uh, that came to offer comment, and it was really great. Uh, I hope that everyone does stay engaged as well. We have more meetings coming up, and I know that's not what everyone wants to hear. Um, but attendance in these is really important, both in the subcommittee meetings and the full commission meeting. Our next full commission meeting is on December eighth. Um, as well, all of the subcommittee meetings, um, are up on the Northampton, uh, city website. So if you wanted to see the upcoming meetings, you're more than welcome, uh, and we would encourage that. And I think with that, Noah, or can someone, uh, motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
All right, uh, so we'll second that. Can you call us out?
Yes, uh, let me scroll up here. Um, Lois, Erin?
Sorry, I have to find everybody.
Unmuting is, sorry. Lois, did you say?
I said, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Um, Dan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Um, Booker?
Yes.
Javier?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Dana?
Yeah.
Carol?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
David? David, are you out there still?
He's still muted.
Still muted, okay. Uh, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Namdi?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dan and Dana. Great job.
Yeah, great work. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you to, uh, Nafeli and Nicholas, too. Thank you.
Yes.